Now you're disappearing again.
I have a buzzing sound.
Yeah, I think it's coming on your end, Peter, because every time you speak, the buzzing stops and then your voice starts to disappear and the buzzing comes back.
Maybe not plugged enough, Peter?
Yep.
Okay, you know what? There's a buzzing, but I think someone may not be on mute.
I think it's when you're speaking that the buzzing goes away.
Okay, I was not plugged in fully. So, excuse me. So on this past Tuesday, I had a phone call, I corresponded with the applicant for 301 Pond Street, and they do have representation here tonight, Raimi Snyder, who's on the screen, who has put her camera on. Everyone can please say hi to Raimi and or if Raimi wants to step forward and introduce herself.
Hi, everyone. Raimi Snyder with Wind Development. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you. So Raimi here represents Wind Development, the applicant on the site. And through correspondence with Raimi in a conversation, they are looking to request a little bit more time to put their application together. Not application, excuse me, presentation together, but also give a little bit more time to reach out and to talk to tenants in the plaza and into other departments within the municipality, such as the GPW department looking at infrastructure and to analyze, but final, you know, not final touches, but but to make any necessary changes that are foreseen. And Raimi, if you would like to step forward and add anything. But in conclusion, the applicant is looking for a extension and or continuance to the February ninth Planning Board meeting, which is the first meeting.
I think you covered it.
Yeah. I'm a direct to butter Tricia, so I think I can be here for the continuance, right?
Um, I'm sorry, I couldn't catch that, Anna.
I'm a direct to butter on that project. I assume Tricia that I'm allowed to be here for the continuance.
I I would certainly, I would certainly think so. There is that buzzing again. I don't know if people can test out where that might be coming from.
And the best way is that everybody mutes themselves except whoever is speaking.
Sounds good.
I make a motion that we continue 301 Pond Street's special permit and site plan review to February ninth.
Is there a second? And a roll call vote?
I have to skip this.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So I just wanted to make one note about that. Peter and I were discussing earlier. Peter, you can jump in if if something's inaccurate, but because the project has been kind of out there for a while, we were going to re-advertise it and re-notify a butters. Is that right, Peter? You're muted.
Excuse me, I'm following my sort of orders. Yeah, I think just in in, you know, looking at it that this application came in October, that I think it makes sense and please chime in, Raimi, if you agree or disagree, is that just to send out a refresher postcard to the butters notifying them the next meeting on February ninth. And obviously, if you could put it into the newspaper, and I would probably ask the applicant to pay that cost, which is about a hundred bucks. And then we can kind of move forward on the right stuff. But I think I think that's the right thing to do at this point, because we've had two fairly long continuances. And it would be, I think, a courtesy to the
Happy to do so. And that would happen two weeks prior?
We would follow the same procedure, yeah.
Okay.
For the fourteen days prior to and following the steps before.
Okay, happy to coordinate with that with you offline.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Right, thank you. So if anyone is here specifically for the 301 Pond Street project, that's the Shaw's Plaza project, we will not be discussing that this evening. Instead, we are moving on to a four to forty-nine Homer Avenue Site Plan and Special Permit Application. Peter, can you give us an introduction to that one? Are you good, Peter? Peter, you're not hearing us anymore? Peter, I assume you are not able to hear us? Hmm. Okay.
We're muted, Peter.
I hear you now. Can you hear?
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah, your voice just went right down and then it just like disappeared, so. I'm sorry, I did not catch the last.
I was just wondering, we're moving on then to four to forty-nine Homer Ave Site Plan and Special Permit Application, and this is the first. This is the first time we're opening that, right?
The first time we're opening it. I do have the public notice in front of me, and I'm happy to read the public notice into the into the record.
Okay, why don't we do that? Thank you.
Okay, please bear with me. The Town of Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven fifteen P M by a Zoom conference. To hear the petition of WJK Homer LLC, four hundred Waverly Ave, Newton, Mass. zero two four five eight. Care of Terrence Morris, attorney, requesting a special permit, design plan review and site plan review per chapter two eighty-two, section eight point five, paragraph point five point two, five point four, and five point five point five, purpose, subarea, and use. And paragraph eight point five point six, dimensional standards, number of floors and height, paragraph five point eleven point four, design, building design standards, roof, paragraph eight point five point thirteen, parking requirements. Excuse me. Nine point three, special permits, roof, section nine point four, site plan review, and section nine point six, design plan review, and section and section five point four, general landscaping requirements of the Town of Ashland bylaws. The application is proposing the development of a three-story mixed-use building that shall include twenty-nine rental apartments with approximately nine thousand four hundred square feet of ground floor, street-facing retail space. The project provides, excuse me, the project provides a total of sixty-five parking spots. The project is proposed to be serviced by town water, sewer, and underground electric and gas. The property in question is identified as nine through forty-nine Homer Ave. Assessors about fourteen lot three fifty-two, three fifty-three, and three fifty-four. The locus is across from the former train station. It consists of four buildings situated of the re-identified lots. The property is within the Ashland Downtown Zoning District C. Parties which should be heard on this matter should submit comments to the planning board ahead of time and or appear to time and place indicated. Materials may be viewed by appointment at Town Hall and or the town's website. For more information, please submit comments to myself, Peter Matzek, and list my phone number and email address.
Um, Peter, just just one note on that, the
The agenda.
Yeah, the there's there's two different addresses listed.
Yeah, there's
Forty-nine.
A scribble, it's nine.
Nine, okay.
Yeah, it's nine, it's a scribble, I'm sorry.
Nope, thank you. I didn't know if the street numbers were, okay. Right. And just just for the, I'll let you give an introduction, Peter, but I I wanted to note to the public today that this is just the very first time the planning board is seeing this project. It's the first introduction. We expect that it will be in front of the planning board for for quite some time. And because we have a very full agenda tonight, we will get an introduction to the project, we'll have a presentation. The planning board will be able to ask any questions or any initial comments that they have. But we will likely not be taking any comments from the public this evening. There there will be other opportunities for public comment, but given our loaded agenda, we'll probably not go too far down that road this evening. But that doesn't mean that you can't send comments, as Peter said, directly to the planning board via email. All right, please, please go ahead, Peter.
With that said, I just want to step forward and introduce the applicant here of attorney, Terry Morris. Terry Morris joins us here tonight on screen. I will let Terry introduce his application team and go from there.
Uh, thank you, Peter, and thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board for the record. My name is Terry Morris. I'm an attorney with offices at fifty-seven Elm Road in Newton. And I'm here representing WJK Homer LLC. And with me is our project architect, Mr. Ron Bork, who is also on screen. Would it be possible to share the screen, Madam Chair?
Sorry. Yes, Peter, can you make Mr. Morris co-host?
Mr. Morris and Mr. Bork, you are both co-hosts, so whomever is sharing the screen, please do so.
I will do so. Thank you very much. Um, I think we're going to start with a global view of the site as as Peter Matzek described, it is actually three slots, and there are a number of buildings on the site involving different uses. The property is located directly across from the former train station. It can actually consist of four buildings on the three lots. On one lot, there's a one-story commercial building here, and I can actually blow the one-story commercial building here with a pizza shop on it. On and that is that with the street address of nine eleven Homer Avenue. There's also a second building with the street address of thirty-five Homer Avenue that has a one-story retail strip. And that is also shown, you see here. And as in the third, at thirty-five Homer, there's a two-and-a-half-story wood frame building also. Uh, which is here. You can see adjacent to the to the commercial strip and then a little further down the road on the corner of Alden Street. Uh, there is a fourth building. Forty-seven Homer, another two-and-a-half-story two-family dwelling built around nineteen hundred and more recently renovated in nineteen seventy-seven. The commercial strip, which is set back from the street, actually with a parking in front, is amidst a sea of asphalt. While the two-family dwellings are allowed in the downtown district, there's an incongruity with the design principles for the district. The song incongruity is reflected in the flat roofs and building orientation of the commercial properties. And the site is further compromised by the lack of a safe and comfortable pedestrian environment with no driveway and walkway connections. You can see that it's pretty much wide open. There while there is a sidewalk along as you go down Homer Avenue. There is the curb cuts are rather it doesn't present a a safe environment, given the proximity of the parking and the freewheeling nature of the circulation within the parking area. As Peter said, the property we propose is a three-level, a three-story building containing twenty-nine units. I should point out that it using the site plan, let's see. Here is a engineered site plan. I would point out that this is primarily site plan approval, because we do meet all of the zoning requirements for this district. Minimum lot area of eight thousand square feet, we have almost forty thousand at thirty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-eight. We have more, much more than the minimum fifty-foot frontage. We have three hundred and fifty-three feet of frontage on Homer Ave and another eight, almost ninety feet on Alden. The minimum front yard setback is eight feet. We meet that on both Homer and Alden. Uh, there's a minimum rear setback of twelve. We also meet that. Number of stories, maximum of three, and we are compliant with a maximum height of thirty-five feet as well. Maximum H R, which, as you know, regulates the volume of the building, is one point five, and we are closer to one point one, one point zero. The parking requirements, Peter laid out the parking requirements. There's a total requirement of a hundred and fifteen spaces, but because of the formula for this particular district, we're actually required to provide. Uh, we're actually provide, we provide sixty-five, and we do, in fact, provide sixty-five spaces. Forty-one of those spaces are subsurface. And another twenty-four are onsite. I get the site plan here shows the the onsite spaces. We'll get more into that as I turn the microphone over to our architect, who will actually go through the brochure. Uh, and here we have a view of the sub-parking plan, as I say, forty-one spaces below grade. One thing I should point out, there is a special permit component to this petition. We were advised by by the planning director to add that, because we have one with particularly acute to the to the design standards required for this district of discouraging flat-roofed buildings. And we have, we designed the building, as you will see, from the, it is there are no flat-roofed buildings visible from the street, and when you get further into the plan, you will see that ninety percent of our building has peaked roofs, gables roofs, dormers and the such. But we do have two two locations where the building is flat. Um, it it takes up less than fifteen percent of the total roof area of the building. And in fact, we are using those flat areas to create a green roof for sustainability environmental purposes. At this point, I will I will turn the my screen over to or the microphone over to our architect, Mr. Ron Bork, who will go through the particulars of the design, including landscape plan and other features of the development. Ron, it's all yours.
Thank you, Terry. First, I want to apologize in advance if if I'm hard to understand. I'm just getting over a cold. So my voice comes in and out, but I'll do my best. Uh, so as Terry mentioned, the first floor along Homer Ave is is going to be commercial. And then as we turn the corner onto Alden, we're transitioning into the residential zone. So we have three units on that first level, which will be accessible. Uh, we've created a pocket park with a presumably a gazebo or some sort of a feature that allows for, you know, public use. Uh, behind it, we will have just a green space due to the garage extending over that area. And so we would limit the loads.
I think, Peter, if you direct me, I can give a more visual presentation of what's there now. That's this is the area that Peter's, I mean, that Ron is describing.
That's correct. So as you, yeah, so to separate the transition from the commercial, turn the corner, turn it, turn, turn down into residential, provide a public amenity, and then continue into the neighborhood. So the the massing of the building by design and by necessity, due to our only having thirty-five feet of height and the requirements for gables, things like that, had led us into a unique, um, I think a unique project. If Terry goes to the second floor, if you go back to the plan, Terry.
Back, sure, yep.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll go back one more. There you go. So this is the second floor. Because of the pitch of the roof, the width of the structure, we created a outdoor space on the second level, which will be an amenity for the for the residents. It's gonna be a green roof, raised planter beds. We have some images and our landscape architect will discuss it a little bit. But the idea being that each one of these units that face the the green roof and as well as Homer Street are actually two-level units. So we'll have living space on the first floor, bedroom and bath on the second floor, two-bedroom units. What that does is allows us to limit our elevator to level two, preventing any overruns from from showing through the roof. It also allows us to maximize the space on the upper level, since there will be no corridors, it'll all be sort of townhouse style. So the the main entry into the building along Homer Ave, Terry, if you go back one. One plan, please. Uh, will be along Homer Ave between the two commercial spaces. That'll serve all the building occupants as well as elevators from the garage and two stairs going up from the garage. They'll only be going up two levels. So then on the second floor, the amenity space that we're creating does have a stair which leads you down to the pocket park. But it's not necessarily, it's more of the, it's more of their it's their patio doors versus their primary doors. So what we've done is we've created this environment, raised one level up that allows these building occupants to to enjoy, you know, private space. Private, private spaces to the units as well as providing the pocket park for the public amenities that the general public can enjoy as well. Uh, if we go to the next plan, Terry. So this shows a roof plan, it sort of delineates that area I'm talking about, and you can understand by the criteria how the building form, you know, came into being. We didn't want to, or we want to reduce the amount of flat roof area and any flat roof that we were creating. We wanted to make sure that it was a it was a benefit to both the building and the city and the residents. So by allowing this to become a a green roof, we've increased the, you know, the living area for for the residents as well as giving them the privacy. It's very difficult with balconies when you have a parking lot on the left side of the building, for example. Uh, if you go to the elevations, Terry.
Yep.
So the the style is, you know, typical New England. Uh, the ground levels have that storefront feel of commercial. Um, commercial space could be, could be, you know, storefronts, or it could be restaurants, it could be, you know, a number of things. Uh, we anticipate five to six units of of businesses there. Second and third floors, traditional, you know, composite materials, clavard, double-hung windows. Uh, just a traditional residential feel. As you walk by the building, it's not overwhelming. It's 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 it enjoyates back and forth. And when Julian, our our landscape architects discusses his concept, you'll see how his landscape concept met the building concept, which is very unique. I have to go to the next one, Terry.
Want me to change screens, Ron? I know you're having difficulty speaking.
Yeah, change screens, please. All right. All right, so these these begin to represent the the look of the building in depth. It's difficult in elevations to really see these undulations and understand them. So the right elevation is off of Homer Street, adjacent to the to the pizza uh, business that Terry had mentioned earlier. Uh, that parking lot serves both the commercial as well as providing an entry to the garage on the on the lower level. The front elevation is along Homer Street. Lot of shadow lines created. Lot of depth and and, you know, the breaking down of masses. You know, we have consistent consistent datum lines with not only the storefronts, uh, but also the window and eve lines above. Go to the next one, Terry. Okay, all right. So this is, this is the Alden Street elevation or perspective looking into the pocket park. Uh, we'll have, you know, amenities benches, bike racks, significant landscaping. The trees along the fence are are possible, because we do have a gap between the foundation below and the property line of, I think, twelve feet. So that allows us to put some some substantial trees there. Um, on the on the plazas themselves will be planted boxes and and low greenery. So this is turning the corner between Homer and Alden and beginning a transition. Uh, these are still in progress. It'll be, you know, we'll work on the left side a little bit, just try to to tie it in a little, little more than it is. But this gives, I think, a good solid concept. If you go to the next one, Terry. So this, this is a roof plan, and the reason I wanted to show it was to identify the two higher roof um, flat portions, which are Terry's got his cursor on one and then on the opposite side. So those are actually how we how we resolve the roof pitches when you get to these corners that are not ninety degrees. So those areas will become, if you think about it, flat, or we could depress them and put our mechanical units in there. And then in the center is the look down into the plaza. And we've got a landscape plan that'll describe what's going on in there. Okay, Terry. All right, so Julian, are you on?
Yes, I am on.
Okay, you want to pick it up from here?
Yeah, I'd love to. Thank you, Ron. Hello, everybody. My name is Julian Salvucci. Just to clarify, I'm not a landscape architect, but I'm a landscape designer. And this is my concept for this development. So let me see. Along Homer Avenue, like Ron described, we have a bunch of storefronts over here. Um, after a site visit, I determined that this area, you know, it's northern facing, so it's significantly shadier. And because of that, it'll also be a little bit wetter, too. So the plants I chose for this area reflect that. On the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see the plants I chose for this area. We have European hornbeam, shamrock hollies, stone hedge u's against the foundation of this development. That's kind of a repeating planting pattern against the the foundation. So this is actually a good example of what it would look like. You have your carpinas on one end, your hollies in the middle, and your stone hedge u's on the other end. And then in the meat, in the rest of these plant beds up front, you have a mixture of different kinds of shrubs, like hydrangeas and low-scape aronias, as well as as well as some other pretty substantial perennials like ostrich ferns and lebriapi. Um, I paid special attention to maintenance, too. I don't envision this area being that difficult to maintain. A lot of the varieties that I chose are either dwarfed, or they're very slow growing, so they're not going to need immediate maintenance, or they're not going to need repetitive maintenance throughout the season. Over on Alden Street over here, right where the proposed gazebo is, we have a lawn area, three trees, they're durahit river birches. And then around this gazebo area, I chose to use prairie drop seed, which is a New England native. And in my opinion, it's a very nice substitute to lawn or to or to scarcely planted mulch beds, you know. Um, songbirds like chickadees, sparrows, blue jays, they also use the the leaves and the straw from prairie drop seed to build their nests out of. So I included that on the right-hand side by Alden Street and on the left-hand side, too, by the entrance to the parking area. Um, so the entrance to the parking area consists of more prairie drop seed as well as durahit river birches. This area is significantly sunnier. It's on the southern side of this property, so we can expect six-plus hours of sunlight over here in front of most of the parking spaces in this thin, I believe it's about four feet wide planting bed. We have a mixture of amsonia and aronia. Um, it's one of my favorite combinations in the landscape. Amsonia turns bright yellow in the fall, and and aronia turns bright red, so I love the color contrast right there. Um, and it's really just used to soften up the, I believe it's a white vinyl fence along the parking. Um, if there are no questions, I'd be happy to move on to the green roof landscape plan. Any questions for this area?
Oh, yeah, why don't you just continue and I'll come back to everything at one time.
Sure thing. So this is the green roof, and I really envisioned this space as sort of like a backyard for all the units around here. So I wanted to make a space for people to obviously easily walk through, but two, to be able to sit, reflect, relax, eat their lunch if they're working from home. I wanted to make a space for people to obviously easily walk through, but two, to be able to sit, reflect, relax, eat their lunch if they're working from home. Or lay out in sunbath if they wanted to, so. Let me see, on the left-hand side in the corner, you'll see all the plants I've chosen for this area, I did quite a bit of research on plants that would. Survive the settings of a green roof, so plants that are drought tolerant and plants that are also. Tolerant of poor soils and shallow soils too, so. In these densely planted areas, we have undulating raised beds, they sit 18 inches above grade, and that's pretty nice because it gives us one. A little bit of visual separation through the space and two, it also. Allows us to have a little bit more variety with our plants because there's more depth to the soil. So we have plants like Russian sage, garden thyme, carax. And a variety others, but those are all planted in these raised beds. And we also have space for some seating areas too, we have one, two, three. Tables shown over here, these could be tables, they could be swinging chairs, they could be benches. And then to the right of that, we also have. We also have, I believe this is Scotch moss over here to sort of stick with that green roof theme. I love Scotch moss, it's a great. Substitute for lawns, unlike lawns, Scotch moss doesn't have to be mowed multiple times a year. It requires less water than traditional lawns do. And it tolerates light to moderate foot traffic too, it's very nice to sit down and lay out on. From experience. Another cool design feature too over here is at the edge of all these raised beds, we have in-ground LED strip lighting, just to sort of lightly brighten the space up at night. And around the perimeter in between the. Units and the walkways, we also have a mass planting of. Let me see, what is this, that is. Garden thyme, thymus vulgaris. In this area, we only have about eight inches of soil, so it's not that much to work with, but. This thyme is completely tolerant of that, it's been proven to work on green roofs in the past and pollinators love it, and also it's very fragrant too. But on the right-hand side, that's an example of what I envisioned these raised beds to look like. You have a mass of plantings with benches on the edge and about. 18 inches of. Metal planter right there. But yeah, that is it for me, thank you guys.
I think that that would, Madam Chair, that would. Conclude our formal presentation, we're now.
Excuse me, Terry, if you, if you. Just kidding, Terry, if you go, if you go to the. The next sheet after the landscape.
Oh.
Plans. We've got a few renderings, just to give a feel for the space.
Yeah, thank you, Ron, that's perfect.
Sorry, Ryan.
That's all right. So this sort of an axon on the left-hand side. Showing how these various levels work with the planting beds. And just to give a, you know, a small sense of the space. You know, we'll provide renderings that are a little more expansive, but. I think this gives us an idea of how that space will work. Thank you, Terry.
Ron, you want to comment on the last three slides?
Yeah, the last three were just really images showing how the landscape. Works with the elevations and creates that separation. But it's, it's not a wall, it's very low, it's very comfortable. And as you're walking down the street. You're, you're walking into these different environments. So it does make it a pleasant. You know, if you compare it to what we have now where it's just solely a parking lot, it's just all asphalt. This gives you an experience, which is important. Thank you.
So that concludes, right, any more, Ron?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, well, we thank you for the opportunity to present, we're now available for any questions the board may have.
Great, thank you, thank you for the presentation, so I'm going to open it up to the board at this time for. General questions, general comments, obviously we're just kicking off here, but looking at some big picture things to. Guide the applicant about what we're going to be looking for as, as we continue to talk about this project. Let me know if you want to jump in.
I can jump in if, if you want, Tricia. So the way I thought about this and I kind of took notes is, I, I think this is a, you know, very. Important project that's going to require some big picture thinking like so many projects we've had recently, so I thought of it almost like a checklist. Of things that I need to think about that might be helpful, and maybe other board members will agree. So I'll, I'll start by saying that. You know, as I'm listening to some of the elements that are being brought forward, I have a lot of optimism. That there's some creativity on the applicant team. That will allow us to. To approach this in a, in a positive constructive way, so I want to start there. For example, I really enjoyed listening to the presentation, I think from Julian about. Some of the green elements and the thoughtfulness of. Addressing, you know, how this project relates to. Small details, not just color schemes and, and design of the landscaping, but the pollinators kind of thinking big picture, which I very much appreciate, so. Just wanted to start there. I think some of the checklist items that I'm thinking about are procedural, for example, I would like to get some input at some point from Peter, not now, but when the time is right. As far as kind of which application is the, the current kind of. Dated application, how that relates to the building moratorium. How it relates to the demo bylaw that was passed at town meeting. Those would be kind of checklist questions procedurally. External to the board. And then internal to the board. It would be helpful for me to understand. When we would present this to design review, at what point we would want their input. And also, it seems like this is a great. Project for a site walk by the planning board to better understand scale. So those are the procedural things. As far as my reaction to the project. I looked very carefully at the key bylaw, specifically the key elements of section 8.51. 8.51, which defines the purpose of the downtown district. And for me, I see kind of. Two elements we must meet, right, we have to show. That the redevelopment in downtown. Is village style, walkable for residents throughout Ashland. And we have to think about a broad economic viability that strengthens our community. Rekindles entrepreneurship and thinks about downtown cooperation, I think there's elements of this project that. Are a starting point for that discussion. But I am seeing a project that's very attractive to residents. And I would like to see a little bit more focus on how this will attract. The intent of the bylaw as far as the community piece. Of connecting the public to the space. And creating a sense of. Community for all town residents, not just for the residents who might enjoy the gorgeous green roof that the public does not have access to. And then the other thing I'll add is. There's obviously historic buildings on the site that are being proposed to be torn down, I think we're going to have to think about. How to approach that as far as the purpose of the bylaw, the special permit. Requires us to address. Whether this project is harmonious with existing buildings that would remain in this area. And I'm thinking about. The post office, I'm thinking about the historic. Train station across the street, I'm thinking about. The. Stones, which is right there, these are extremely historic buildings that have a certain visual presence. And this project has to be harmonious with that vision of our downtown, with the history of, of our downtown. I'm not there yet. Based on what I'm seeing, but like I said, I see a lot of creativity on this team that I'm seeing. In the, in the application and I'm hopeful that we can get there.
Great, thanks, Anna. Anyone else from the planning board want to, want to comment?
I can offer some, couple of comments, Tricia. Well, first of all, I. I would say that I, I agree with just about every point that Anna brought up, I'm interested in, in hearing. Answers to the procedural part, the, the, the only part that I might see a little different is that, that in, in terms of the. Of the existing structures in the site, I've, I've, I walked the site and I, I've been looking at it since I knew the application was coming and. I think definitely it's a site that, that, that is just a harsh patch of leftover. Pieces of development that, that are very non-congruent and I, I think this is a step. In a good direction in general. I would say in terms of the, the things that I've been, I'll be looking for, I missed a few notes here. In the side, I agree with Anna that it, it's. It's a tough side geometrically speaking and, and I think there's, there are creative ways that this is being handled. But the, 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 that, that comes with, with some, with some issues that I'll just say in a minute, but from the site plan point of view, just big picture. The, the, the walkability and, and the environment that this is creating on. Along Homer Avenue, I think is very, seems very appropriate for the downtown and for the. For the intent of the district. The edge of the public way, I think what would be, that, that, what would be critical for me is to make sure that the design. Of the edge. Of the street is completely consistent with everything else that has been done in downtown lately, all the sidewalks and, and, and. The approach to curb cuts and, and curbing etc should be a continuation of what's been done throughout downtown, so I think that's very important, I think the, the. The, the, the retail space. Seems appropriate for a downtown situation, I'm a little dubious about what kind of business really we, we are talking about here. In terms of restaurants. If, if that is the case, what kind of restaurants are we talking about and is the, is the building really setting up for the infrastructure of a restaurant? We, we would like, we, we will need to understand that a little bit more. In terms of the, of the, of, of the geometry of, of, of the building. The inside corner, it's, I mean, it's creatively developed and, and, and I like the effort of, of making a roof, a roof scape that, that feels like a village. But the inside corners are awfully tight, I don't know what the, the inside dimension on, on the inside of that triangle is between one unit and that we know the unit. In front of you, it seems a little tight and. Maybe something that we can review later, the, the inside park, I think, seems very, a, a good solution, an appropriate solution. For, for the unit, but the top roof green areas that were shown on the, on the roof plan. That. To me doesn't make any sense, we didn't hear about mechanical equipment, or I guess we just heard in passing, but I want to make sure that. Non-mechanical equipment is going to be visible and those areas will be better suited for, for concealing any mechanical equipment on, on those roofs. And lastly, just in terms of the aesthetics, I mean, the, the sound review is going to have a, a lot of work to do with, with this, like Anna mentioned, I, I see some start conversation. I think the building lacks. A much better trim work throughout the facade to, to give it a little more texture and to my, to my liking, the, the. The trim work shown here in the retail area seems a little overdone, like excessive, all that dental work. But that's something that I think will, I would like the, the design review to. To work with the applicant on, overall, I, I, it looks like everything else is being met, the, the, all the requirements, so. Not much to say on, on that, other than those, those few concerns.
Right, Kate, thank you, Marcelo. Kate, Kevin, Deepa?
Comments, I, I'm going to start by saying I, I'm disappointed that we didn't have this drawing set to look before the meeting, I mean, I know. Myself and all my colleagues. Put a fair bit of time into preparing for meetings, I. I think. We would have looked through that, so I'm not as capable to make. Those too many comments overall, I second pretty much everything Anna. And Marcelo said, but disappointed about that, which may go along with the process and procedural part. I do think the economic development portion absolutely has to be discussed, I mean, it's nice to show storefronts. But empty storefronts are not economic development and don't get a vibrancy of downtown, which is part of that, so we definitely need to look into that. The parking, I, I think from the application that we did get pre-meeting. Met the parking, but there was a little sketch that showed. Compact spaces. And I, I want, I believe our board should be 100% transparent. About those things we need to talk about, we need to say, are we going to allow that? And not just count them. Because what would that be if they were all compliant spaces, I think we should ask for that information. From the applicant. So that's it for now, thank you.
I don't have anything additional, Tricia, at this point.
I'm, nothing additional at this point, Deepa?
No, I think everybody said it all.
And Kevin?
I think that you hit most of them, what Marcelo said about making sure we tie into what's been done in downtown, I think it's huge, just on, looking at this view that we see here. You know, I'd like to see a lot more detail of how that will really look. It looks like maybe the building is getting a little close here if we were to widen these sidewalks out and have the bike lane like the rest of downtown is going to have. And the parking is something that I. Would like to look a little more at too, just. These are. You know, businesses and restaurants and that kind of thing, and we're using the shared parking and. Bylaw does allow shared parking. But I think that's. How does that work if it's restaurants, because then you're not, you know, the residents are home at night. When people would be going to the restaurant, so just more, more to think of there.
Yeah, agreed. I think obviously all, all great points made by the board. And I think there's probably a lot more, I assume there's a lot more information here, we, we got the, the surface part of the information. Rather than the depth of discussion on any one of these points, so. You know, I think there's a few more things to, to throw in there, it'll be interesting to get a little deeper into the sustainability aspects of things as we head toward. Net zero, Peter, I believe there's a, there's kind of a working checklist, I get, I guess at this point about, about sustainability that. Maybe we could easily let, let the applicant have, have early at this time, it's still in development, but. But something that they can, they can work from and, and ask questions about, I think that'd be important to pass on, I didn't hear. I didn't hear anything, I don't think about affordable housing is, I, I might have missed it, was, was that part of the discussion at all? Mr. Morris?
I, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, you're asking me if the affordable housing is part of the discussion?
I, I was wondering if there's an affordable housing component in this building?
We certainly can't, we certainly could provide that, yeah.
But as of now, we're not showing any affordable units, is that?
No, we thought, this is, this is. Site plan, so we're focused on the physical characteristics of the building, if we wanted to get into. An afford, you know, an inclusionary, it's called inclusionary in some jurisdictions. We could certainly discuss that and we're not, we're not adverse to that, I would, I would like to however respond to your sustainability point. These buildings are going to be, our aim here is to make these fossil free.
Great.
Yeah, and we think that's important. Our parking will have EV, will be prepared to be EV ready. And we will provide a certain number of charger stations. We didn't get into all of that kind of depth because it, we recognized we were supposed to just set the table here. But we want to tell you that that's our approach.
I, I appreciate that, we, we did give you a very tight timeline and I very much appreciate you staying within that and also allowing. Opportunities for questions, I mean, and, and I think it's pretty obvious that you are looking at the, both in terms of the building and in terms of the landscape. That the thought is already there in terms of sustainability, so I'm not saying that's not a part of the project, I'm just going to offer you the checklist that the, we've been kind of working on to kind of. Get you seeing, getting on the same page as where the planning board has been in previous recent projects. Personally, I think that, that there's a, you know, a good starting point here, obviously this exterior facade is, is in its early stages in development, I, I don't think this. This uniform gray color is probably where we'll end up, right? So it's kind of a cartoon, a little bit of, of where this project is going, but I appreciate the effort. To have been listening carefully, I think, from some of the previous projects in the past. And the comments made by the board at that time. Of the direction we feel. Ashland is going, granted, we have a comprehensive plan process that is just beginning, but we have to. Also go from, from what we know, what we know today on these projects. So I appreciate, I appreciate that start and I look forward to the continued. So I appreciate I appreciate that start, and I look forward to the continued um the continued conversation um on the project as we get more in-depth of it in 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 the months to come. Um, so if um just kind of looking at my notes here, um, I think there's a few things that um that especially Anna had mentioned in terms of procedural questions that maybe um uh Peter will need to fill this in on as we go as we go forward, what what's gonna happen first, what's going to happen second. Um, and then I think we'll start to set the upcoming meetings based on um focusing on certain topics, you know, so that we can get more in-depth with each meeting on on certain topics. We might be one meeting away from that yet because we haven't um gone into depth, as Kevin mentioned about the parking. We haven't gone into depth about the sustainable aspects of the building. We just got that overview. But um but that will be coming. So um, I appreciate the presentation today and Peter, where would we be? Where would be rescheduling this project for a second discussion?
Can can I ask a very quick procedural question before we start talking about rescheduling?
Yes, and is Peter on? I don't actually see him on my screen. Okay, sorry.
Can I ask a procedural question of Peter? I I'm just trying to figure out timelines. I I'm looking at section eight point five, point fifteen. There are certain situations where the town planner can designate that the application meets the design review standards, and then we have a very limited amount of time. We have ninety days as the planning board to address a special permit. Is that one of these situations or not?
No, this is not one of those situations.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
No, I think the design stand, the design needs to be reviewed by the planning board uh and also the designer view.
Okay.
This is a big project. It's gonna affect it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we weren't limited to ninety days.
But no, we're not limited to ninety days. And I've had conversations with the applicant about the process and 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 we do need to do a design review on this case, obviously. And um
But on on that, Peter, can you can you expand? Because Anna touched on it, and I think um um Trisha too. Um, or or Trisha, I don't know if this question is for you. The 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 process with the design review committee. I mean, we we we're gonna start getting into into different topics on the next meetings ahead. Uh, but how do we see the the sign review committee coming in and at what point?
Um, I I think there's certain things, um, like the the bigger picture things that I want to make sure we we talk about as the the planning board first, and maybe that's a meaning that we can make sure or invite the design review committee to be at least at least listening as a part of the conversation to our meeting to know where we sit, if 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 they can, obviously. Before going to design review committee, and I I think we hadn't quite worked out the procedural things about um sixty days or ninety days being a calendar day or being when the project is actually active. So as soon as a project is continued, that clock stops on on the day. So um, so I think there's actually, I think that that needs to be that those kind of clocks need to be looked at again by Peter and Town Council to make sure we're all in agreement about what that means. But that kind of means the clock is not, it's not a calendar clock. It's a planning process clock, so which are are very different.
I I do think that this is a unique project that would be helpful to get some designer review perspective early on. Like, I'm looking at the bylaw. You know, the outdoor pedestrian area shall be provided at any lot where the floor area is thirty square feet or more. It seems that we might be looking at that. Um, we have to have benches, street furniture, shade trees. Um, we have to have connection to adjacent residential neighborhoods through pedestrian ways. There's so many elements of this that require some design review focus that I don't know if we as a planning board want to handle all of that before design review does first, so.
I I think it's more, yeah, I think it's more like looking at at the 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 bigger picture even that we saw, we saw a site plan of this, but we didn't see it really in context of the map of downtown. How are people getting into this site? How are they? You know, that kind of really big picture, um that big picture issue to me, what you know, what are the parking spaces? How many are there? To have that kind of discussions that we have some information about where we're sitting on these things before we pass it on to the design review committee. So um I think some things, absolutely, they could jump in and start commenting right now, but I don't think the project is clear enough in my mind um to pass it on yet.
Yeah.
Okay, but it it could be just one more meeting. Um, um, I'm not sure, a meeting where obviously we give it a lot more time than thirty minutes, so um. All right, and any other comments on that note? Okay, then then Peter, when are we going to continue this to where we can have that longer, more in-depth discussion on this project?
So our next, our next meeting is uh, excuse me, January twenty sixth. At that meeting, we would do have the ten to sixty Main Street project back on. And then the following meeting is three oh one Pond Street, which is going to be on February ninth. Uh, obviously, that project was continued, obviously, tonight, but again, they will be quote unquote, kind of, you know, introducing after that project on the ninth. Um, I think uh I I am happy to 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 pick either or. I think probably February ninth, it would allow the project to mature a little bit uh from the design, from from the from the application team. Um, and then we can maybe kind of all have a little bit more time looking at the plans as as Kate uh has mentioned. Um, and then kind of go from there. Um, I think if we're looking to move the, you know, the to get this to the designer view, maybe we can have a conversation um on January twenty sixth um and and put a time limit on it. Uh, but those are the two dates that I would propose.
Trisha, are we doing public comment today?
I am not doing public comment today because we're already at eight fifteen. But um we will have an opportunity for that at the next meeting where we get into the this in more depth. So.
In 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 attorney, uh, Mr. Morris, Attorney Morris, um, do you have a uh, you know, I I personally think February ninth probably be the best bet for the planning board. Uh, but to give us, you know, some time to look at it, and obviously left for the, you know, for for your team to kind of take some of some of the comments back that were made tonight. Are you willing, excuse me?
Sorry, I had a quick question about that, but go ahead, Peter.
Oh, please, Anna.
No, that's fine.
Nope. Well, what's your question, Anna?
My question was, if we're not gonna have public comment today, are we doing notice to Butters for the next hearing? Usually that doesn't happen for the second hearing.
No, that does not happen for the second hearing.
So is that a good idea to not take any public comment today? Um, if we're not gonna do notice for the second hearing?
Well, it's just a matter of all, all, I mean, obviously, there'll be multiple opportunities for public for pub for public comment as this project goes forward. So um again, I if if people have comments based on what they've seen today, they can certainly send it to the planning board via via email. Those obviously, we read them, we pass them on to the applicant. Um, but um, you know, but we will have multiple opportunities uh for that, but we are, we've already given forty-five minutes to the project. We we had anticipated thirty. So um I am going to to leave that for another time when we have a more in-depth discussion about this project. So um where are we looking, Peter? We're looking at?
I think we should look at February ninth. Uh, Attorney Morris, are you are you in uh, do you believe the ninth is a good date for you?
Well, um, Peter, the 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 lapse of time between now and the second meeting is entirely at the discretion of the board because it's the board that needs to digest the information that we have presented. We have been given no direction to change anything. So, you know, how how we, whether we have two weeks or we have four weeks is not much we can do.
I think I think some of the things that we would be looking for, um, a- and there's not specific things about switching the plan around at this point, but we would be looking for more in-depth information about sustainability, which you may check off very easily, which
Yeah, we will.
Check us. We'd like more information about affordability.
We can do that, too.
Yep, and I think there's um, there's likely some other comments.
No, I think there was some consistency about kind of public, the connection of this project to the surrounding area. Um, a little bit more of a focus on public access to the the green areas. Um, it's not a hundred percent clear to me why there isn't a way to kind of allow less of a block building versus the public having more access through the building. Um, I think things like that are what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that's maybe I'm going for the next piece of information. We need that everything we saw, we saw just the site in isolation, and we didn't see it in its context of the surrounding block. So it's even a really hard, a little really hard to to picture. So when we talk about that accessibility of the public, when you talk about how solid is the building? If we can see it in more, a greater context in in plan or um in in renderings, that would help. Um, so that kind of level of information is where it'd be going next, and that might be very achievable in two weeks. I don't know what our agenda is looking like in two weeks.
And I I I agree, Trisha, that 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 maybe uh we 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 should request that the that the applicant brings us a a a plan or a satellite view of the downtown with the project superimposed. I think that's an important conversation.
So Peter, what is our agenda looking like at the the second meeting of January? Is it is is it full already? I I don't have
No, right now, we right now, we just have the ten to sixty Main Street project on, and then anything that gets brought over from tonight.
Okay. Um.
You want to move it to that agenda?
I'm I'm happy to move it to, since this was just the introduction to the next to the next meeting, yeah.
Two weeks, two weeks.
In two weeks, and that should I I think given the the things that we're we're putting forth, you can get those materials together, and then we'll have that deeper discussion um and reserve time for public comment as well.
We'll certainly be prepared to discuss both the sustainability and the and affordable component at that time.
Okay, and and the bigger view of
And the bigger view and the and the more panoramic view or oversight.
Right, right. That would be, that would be a gr- a great place to um, a great starting point for that conversation, big picture items. So, all right.
Thank you for that direction.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, um, that uh, on that note, I will entertain a motion to um to continue this project to January, what is it, twenty twenty-sixth? Is that right?
Six, correct.
I'll make a motion to continue the four four nine Homer Avenue site plan and special permit application to January twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth, right?
January twenty
Of twenty twenty-three.
At seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen.
Do you have a second? Second. Anna roll call vote?
Deepa, I can die.
Anna Tesmenitsky, I.
Marcelo, I.
Catherine Jersey, I. And Trisha Kendall, I. All right, we will see you again in two weeks.
Thank you very much for your time and your courtesy. Look forward to seeing you then.
Thank you. Please, uh, members of the public who came on to listen to this discussion, please mark your calendars for to join us on January twenty-sixth. All right, next on our agenda um is the continued public hearing of three ninety-nine yeah, three ninety-nine Union Street, which is the Starbucks um building looking to go into um the current uh Walgreens site. Um, Peter, can you just let us know where we are?
So at the last meeting, uh, we had a good discussion with the applicant, uh, and they have made some modifications to the plan. Um, and so um, number one, the applicant in a previous, in in the email that was sent out uh to everybody has provided us with uh pictures, uh, real-life pictures of two uh buildings uh in their completed uh Starbucks in Easton in Foxborough. And I think uh those were those were given out to everybody. Uh, furthermore, one of the comments uh from the design review committee was to uh locate a welcome to Ashland sign at the apex of the uh triangle, and uh the applicant uh has uh made a note on a revised plan uh that the uh sign, and that they are willing to work with the town to locate a uh a sign that says welcome to Ashland uh at that apex of that intersection. Furthermore, the applicant has uh rearranged a crosswalk uh crossing Summer Street uh as we talked about. Uh, and then furthermore, the applicant has uh chain, you know, has has as as a GCG request, have submitted a new lighting plan. And they've also uh taken a look at the O and M plan uh that has been signed by the developer and moved forward. One element uh in fact that the applicant uh has brought forward is that the hours of operations would be five AM to eleven PM. Uh, that would be daily, seven days a week. Uh, that was just a note of the operating hours. I do want to make a note that I did receive a letter which was sent out to the planning board from Anna Butter, the Romalos, uh, and I uh I have that. Um, actually, I thought I printed it out. I think, oh, I did print it out. Uh, but I just want to make uh certain that the planning board was able to receive that and review that better. Um, other than that, the applicant is here tonight, Mr. Greg Salvador, um, Mr. Jerry Efrain, and I believe the architect, Mr. Scott Rogers, is here. Uh, and I will pass it off to them and go to the board if they have any questions come up uh that need to be answered.
Yeah, I think I think if we can bring up the current um, the revised site plans and have have that presented, that would be great.
Uh, Mr. Rogers, would you like to be co-host to bring up the plan? Or would you like me to do that, do so?
So is someone taking the reins here? Someone's gonna bring?
I uh I'm I'm grabbing the plans. I'm sorry. I have it coming up. Oh. One minute. I'm happy to share my screen. I have to. Uh, this is the latest plan. Uh, as you can see, uh, number one, the applicant has proposed a welcome to Ashland sign and or the ability that the town that can work with the applicant to make uh to to locate a welcome to Ashland sign. The crosswalk uh which was at a uh uh angle has been straightened to a ninety-degree angle down Summer Street. Uh, this parking spot, which we talked about at the last meeting, for a turnaround spot for cars and or the accessible vehicles coming up to be able to turn around, has been uh hatched out, and that will be a new parking. Uh, so that lost spot has been uh will become a turn, will help for vehicles to turn around. And I believe, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the application team, that those are the changes. Um, those are the changes. Would everybody, would anybody want to see the the pictures of the uh the Starbucks from Easton and Foxborough?
Uh, first of all, then, anyone on the planning board have questions or um, but is there, is Peter, are you just introducing this? Is anyone?
The application team, I'm happy for them to jump in at any point uh if they
Good evening. Good evening. This is Jerry Efrain, uh, pleased to be with you. Um, Peter accurately summarized uh the changes since we last convened. Um, he did not leave anything out. Um, all of those have been either on the plan or addressed in writings to the board, which you have. Um, Scott can answer engineering questions. Uh, and myself and Greg will will do our best to fill in the blanks. We had asked Peter to make the presentation um because at the time of the last meeting, we really were in the middle of questions. Um, and and the responses that we made and changes were in response to those questions. The only preparation I did tonight before the meeting, today actually, I went back and took a look at um your decisions over the past year. The the one thing that struck me was that for whatever reason, and it's kind of attributed to the board and the difficulty matters you have, this is one of the only pure site plan reviews you've had in about a year. Every other matter you've had has been a combined special perimeter site plan and for which several board members noted in the last hearing is a significantly different and more difficult and more intensive inquiry because of the standards met by each applicant. I think we've responded with adequate information to each of the criteria, but of course, that's not my decision. That's the board's decision. I think tonight we'd be best served by trying to respond to additional questions, if any, from the board um or from the public um to see where we are in the process.
Thank you for that input. Um, so who is actually um can we see the images of the um of the other uh buildings? can we see the images of the um of the other uh buildings that were sent out earlier? So we can get a better idea. We had asked to get a better idea what this what is standard with with this Starbucks may look like.
So I'm just gonna pull up that email. Uh, which I have ready to go. Uh, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Uh, okay, so this is my email sent out. Uh, so this uh, correct me if I'm wrong, excuse me. This is a a uh, the store uh which was recently built in Easton. Uh, that would be the the front of it. Interior. Uh, another drive through. Then this is the Foxborough store. Interior shot. Exterior. Uh, this is the exterior looking at the front. Exterior. And then that's the exterior shot.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Um, I had just a couple of technical things. Um, I did send it, Peter, but I don't I if he did respond, I missed it. I I believe in the GCG report under the C four grading and drainage, there was one item, it's item four, C four grading drainage plan that actually uh, it didn't appear to have any comments or resolution, so I looked at, you know, to kind of check that report. Um, it also referenced the O and M manual, but I did not see that either, so I I um haven't had a chance to look at that. I sent uh Peter a question like if I missed a screenshot of what was posted on the website, wasn't there? Um, so those are a couple of things. The details on the plan, um I know they're responded to a lot of comments like there's bollards added um in the storefront based on comments from the fire department. And then when you go to the details, um on the site legend, there's an MM that seems to be missing. It says like, see the details of the bollards. And I don't think that's part of the plans. Um I have other notes here, details of the concrete curb stops. And maybe that that's something that was referenced, but we don't have details or we should maybe get details. Um, does the O and M plan need to be submitted or reviewed by COMCOM? And I think this site is fairly sensitive because of that drainage. I think uh we've had some comments to in a butter about that particularly, and we also as a board have been trying to make sure we we do our due diligence for the community in the neighborhood. Um, I think the queuing plan should be updated. We got that on an early drawing, um, but with the added stuff, it's I I would um, I believe in compliance with nine dot four dot four dot four of our bylaws. Um, we should probably it get that anyway. And secondly, just to be transparent to the public of how that's really gonna look. What what that means. Um, one of the comments, uh C three on the um GCG report. I think it says not resolved. I don't have that report in front of me. I apologize what that is. Um I think something we didn't talk about, and maybe that's just because I mean, we focus. You know, I I I just, I guess I'm gonna admit full disclosure when the application came and we're saying something great for Ashland, and right now I feel like we're we're looking at a Starbucks for Ashland, which isn't the best that I was thinking and um, so I'm gonna say two comments about that. I think we have to talk about the volume of the speakers. Right now, there's a limited use drive-through and there there are neighbors that live right there, so we we have to talk about um that whole speaker. And the second thing following up about that, I I would like to know if we've actually gotten a no from corporate Starbucks that this is the best we can get for Ashland, like best on um, net zero towards sustainability, if there's any other things, the best design, because I feel like we're getting um, generic design, not something maybe for Ashland. Um So I I'd like to see if they were actually asked if we got a no. Because I I disappointed about that. I would, I'm still looking for something unique to Ashland that the board can be proud of. Um, I have concerns about those dumpsters where they're right there. So again, the the dramatic, this is a dramatic change in operating hours of the business at that site. It's already commercial. We understand that. The community understands that, but if we're going from five AM to eleven PM, seven days a week. And it's a primarily drive-through business. And I have to empty the dumpsters and a dump truck um for trash goes by that queue, I think we need to understand that a little better.
Can we put the site plan back up?
Uh, here is the site plan.
All right, great.
Just a note that the underlying zoning is industrial.
I guess so, but I believe we have. So we we're we're supposed to be looking at noise letters and then accessibility, safety. So if we're gonna have a queue of traffic that's now backed up because I have to empty the dumpster, so I think we need to investigate that. And then I think related to all that, my last comment for now would be we received um a letter from a resident uh discussing how this this is going to have an impact on traffic and it's our job as a board to figure out um mitigation of the impact or if it's too much impact. And I think that um suggestion about considering um, could have some landscape across the way to protect an asset of the public that is absolutely impacted um by this project needs to be considered. And that's all my comments for now.
Um, Kate, before you go, can you explain um the what you mean by the landscape across the way?
Um, I, did you not read the email received from a resident? I I'm on one screen, so I can't pull it up to read it.
Um, I I did, but um I I can't recall exactly what that.
It was, it was the, Tricia, it was the pavilion across the way in Ashland State, uh, not Ashland State Park, the this, the the small pavilion right across from the site um that's used by the town to rent to the community, et cetera. There's a small pavilion covered one uh right there in Stone Park. Right next to the playground.
So I'm wondering what the what the the ask is. The ask is for landscaping that isn't on the on the applicant's property?
So so it's saying, I mean, that is correct, and I think that's being more traffic impact. If if a um landscaping across there has a a way to mitigate that impact of a public space, I think that's well worth considering.
It is also kind of creating a screen to avoid noise. Um, I think the intention was that particular Stone Park Pavilion right now is being used by artists to kind of have kind of studios there, and it's pretty quiet space. So the concern from the public was this is going to be so much traffic here that's going to have an effect on the environment. Can we do something about creating landscape elements or screens to mitigate that noise pollution?
Peter, could you identify the letter that is being referred to about the pavilion? I've never seen it.
I think this is a letter that I, you know, Jerry, I don't know if I was able to forward to you, but I'm.
Well, that's that's not, that's not good. Because we're we're listening to comments about something I've never seen. The only letter we saw was when you forwarded over today from the butter um that that spoke to other issues. It did not speak to the pavilion.
Well, I apologize if uh if if I if I did not have uh, if I did not do that, uh, things are busy.
So uh, i- if I could, Tricia, jump in with some of my comments and also reaction to Kate's comments. So I was thinking about this because I think it's tricky when we talk about integration with the neighborhood. There's kind of interests that that are somehow can be conflicting, right? On the one hand, we want this to be and this is an important intersection in the community and we want, at least I think at our first meeting with Starbucks, we talked about the interconnection with the community, making that space part of that Stone Park green space. Now we're talking about mitigation and noise, which creates a little bit of a boundary or or separation. So that balance is important to kind of throw out there. We have to find a way for this project to be consistent with the bylaw with the site plan review criteria where we honor certain characteristics. And so going back to basics, I looked at the site plan review criteria. And to me, we have to make sure that whenever possible the site plan review shall do these things, right? And some of those things are number six, screen objection objectionable features from neighborhood properties and roadways. Number ten, when applicable, the site plan shall show measures to reduce and abate noise generated from the site that will impact surrounding properties. Number twelve, the site plan shall be consistent with the objective of the comprehensive plan and other applicable specific plans adopted by the planning board, arguably net zero, which the entire community adopted. I do think the site plan review criteria allow us to be firm on those points. We as a planning board have a right to to grab onto those three points or any other of the twelve and say, these are important to us. So number twelve, net zero, that's important to us. And the site pl- plan review stat bylaw allows us as a board to say this shall be required. Um, if there is noise from the site and this is a drive-through, I don't think we need anything other than logic to know that a drive-through will have more noise, a busy drive-through in that intersection. Um, we will need to address that. That's element ten. If there are objection objectionable features to the neighborhood and if there is a public letter that can be shared with the applicant showing some objection to a feature which is more noise, et cetera, we we can, in fact, as a planning board, address it. So we do have that authority and I wanted to kind of reinforce that.
Yeah, I I agree. I mean, I I think obviously these are, these are important factors. I'm trying to figure out um from my side, I agree with the things about the the building has to um you know, meet the height, the the same level of sustainability that we that we expect of other projects. Um, as far as screening, obviously, that that should be a part of um any project. Um, I'm I'm sure I was wondering where the, you know, where the um you know, there's a line somewhere. There's a line about using your own property to screen things versus versus going across the street and asking for things that might really not be in in this jurisdiction. Also wondering about noise. I mean, there are things that we can probably do to mitigate some noise, but I'm frankly, I'm not sure when I'm in the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through that it's that noisy. Um, the traffic is noisy, but not the not the drive-through itself, right? One thirty-five is noisy, right? But the drive-through itself, uh, I'm you know, is everyone stopped, so it's fairly is fairly quiet, whereas you know, Summer Street, when you get a ballgame going on there, it's pretty noisy because of the ballgame, right? So I'm trying to be fair like a- about these about these things. Now that that certainly does not mean that this applicant doesn't have to take responsibility for the amount of cars that will be not just standing still, but moving through the site, the safety involved there, that making the site um uh a be a beautiful addition to Ashland. But I am looking for where the where the line is um between between this property and Ashland as as a whole, right? And what their responsibilities, what their responsibilities are.
Tricia, adding to that, the noise factor, I know I mentioned it, but it's just highlighting what that letter was, but also we should remember when when some, when a car is coming out of that driveway, they are not at hundred miles per hour. It's literally just turning around the corner. So noise generated by traffic is going to be very minimal. It's not because people are coming out of that Starbucks driveway at this point, so we have to educate both sides. It's just not something that we just ask the applicant to address, but we have to be realistic, like, is that gonna be really affecting that pavilion? So.
But but it's not just about noise, right? More traffic means more pollution means a different kind of environment and the site um, the site plan review criteria and design review bylaw does give us some authority to think about things like what is the uh, character of our town, of our community? What is the historic and culture cultural heritage of our town? Because it's literally in there. The purpose of design plan review is to honor those things. So when I think of Ashland, I'm not sure a five AM Starbucks drive-through is what we are as a community. I can tell you where I live which is very close to Pond Street. My local coffee shop, which is um Bodacious, opens around six thirty or seven. Um, five AM is is unusual for Ashland. I I I I have trouble seeing how we need such a busy intersection um essentially around the clock, five AM to, I think, eleven PM. Um, I I I don't look at Ashland as a city. To me, we we really are a town. Um, and there is a character of peace and quiet in that area of Ashland.
It's 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 true, but it's just not, I mean, as a person who is sometimes up and driving at five or six o'clock to go into my office, sadly enough. Um, that there's just not that many people, I mean out at that time. Now, at eight AM, where everyone is trying to get to work and the whole downtown area is filled with cars. Yeah, but then the whole downtown area then is filled with cars. It's not this, just this area. It's everywhere. Um, and then it's quiet again, right? So um, so agreeing.
But but I'm not in a butter, right? We don't live right next to it, so.
No.
For me, getting a cup of coffee at five AM is gonna be convenient if I'm going to the airport, because I don't live right next to Starbucks. It has a drive-through. But I think to the neighbors who are used to the peace and quiet of Stone Park, to walking their kids there, to taking their dog there, whatever it is they do on a quiet, peaceful morning. Having a drive-through Starbucks there will in fact change the character of our town. I I don't think that's crazy to say.
No, I I don't think so either, but I think it's also um, you know, trying to judge between the you know, okay, right now we have Walgreens. Before that, it was Rite Aid. I think I think I can say that they were both pretty unsuccessful businesses for quite a long time. The parking lot was usually empty. And here's, so how do we feel about um, you know, potentially successful business um, coming into Ashland, right? Uh, and filling that slot? What what are we saying about? Yeah, or is it just, you know, is it is it a problem with this particular likely successful business? That's that's what I'm I'm wanting to know, like the more.
If I can add a couple of comments too.
Yeah, I appreciate then any comments.
Uh, um, I I actually uh haven't heard what everybody said. I I I I agree with uh with some of the latest points. I I think this this site uh has been a really sore spot of downtown. I I think this is a huge improvement to to the town, and I think in terms of landscape and in terms of uh, the the this whole corner with all the businesses are there is busy and it's gonna stay busy forever because this is a business area. Um, so I I think the 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 project as 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 presented makes sense. I have three points that 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 I just add that beyond whatever what has been discussed so far. In terms of the of the screening, I agree that 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 probably better screen from the park, it's 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 not uh unreasonable. I think should be in their property, and I think that they 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 could um make a a a stronger landscape effort on that edge. Um, and and in my view, that would take care of that. The 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 adjustments that have been done to the site plan with the sidewalk is what we asked, and I think it's much better. Um, made, it seems good to me. Um, in terms of the site and landscape, the second part is uh, we were shown two two types of Starbucks from other towns. One is very different than the other. One has a long canopy uh and one has no, it's just a flat front. Um, are are we can can we understand what this one is going to look like? That would be my question. One is a lot more attractive than the other. Um, I would love to know how this one is going to look. I I assume that that should be no secret by now. I think that that should be something that's well understood. Um, and lastly, my last question is in terms of site plan, and if the engineer is here, I would like to um, to to just ask one quick question. We talked about that turnaround on the on the dead end parking area, which we striped uh, a parking spot like Peter explained, to be able to turn around, and that 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 makes sense, and I think that worked out well. My question is, what would be wrong with um modifying the end of that dead end zone with some type of strapping of paving area so that when there is no, not a long queue waiting for 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 the for the drive-through that is going through, that you can actually make your way out and and to 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 the other exit towards um, towards the Union Street. Could 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 that be added? Or is there is there a an engineering reason not to do that?
So can I
On a response?
Yeah, please. Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure I understand that last question about the turnaround area. We did add, remove a parking space to add the turnaround area for the parking lot.
Yeah, no, I I I'm referring to if if you, I don't know who's handling the screen, but if you if you point to, if if I enter that that aisle and I and right at the end, right there, the 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 aisle ends on on some lawn, I guess, presumably, where you would have to kind of do a three point turn right there. Can can that area that's being yellowed out? Could could that be a a one way not enter zone that in in the event that you want, that you are in there? You could actually exit towards the drive through and maybe go towards Union Street if the if 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 the queue allows you. But nobody can come from the drive through into that area. That could be just a a one way. Is that that would seem to me that would make the the flow better and and it would be a lot, a lot fewer cars kind of trapped in that in that area in when when the queue allows. Is that something that, is there a reason that we couldn't do that?
Yeah, so that was actually addressed in an earlier revision. The one of the earlier plans, I'm not even sure that the town saw that, but an earlier version of that had that connection. But in working with Ron Mueller from Mueller Associates and also with GCG, one of the biggest comments was the queuing and the stacking for the drive through lane. So if you were to do that, that would definitely interfere with queuing. It would not be a good idea as far as the queuing. The queuing that was recommended and agreed upon was between eleven and thirteen cars. I believe at one point we had queuing for twelve and we added that thirteen vehicle to accommodate Ron Mueller's concerns. So that was looked at earlier on, but it was removed for that, those specific reasons.
So is that the reason that people would try to 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 get to the queue? If if that's open?
Right.
Okay.
That's why it was closed off.
Okay. Uh, can you address some of those GCG comments that one of the members highlighted in her comments to you?
I can. So the O and M plan was submitted earlier on in the process. It was also submitted to Conservation Commission. So I resubmitted it to Peter Matchuk. So he had that, but it was a signed version by the owner of the property. So the O and M plan has been, you know, on record for quite a while. One of the comments that was made again about bollards, that was a requirement or a request from the fire department. And I believe there are bollard details as well as curb stop details details within the plan set. The queuing plan has been updated and I can provide that to you, but it really there's no change in the queuing itself. Some of the revisions that we made for this most recent revision were regarding the crosswalk, the stop bar, the stop sign at the exit to the drive through. I believe we've addressed all of the comments from GCG as well as Mueller. We've had two different review engineers review this site a few times now. Peter Matzek has also worked with us on all the comments and I believe, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've talked about being okay with the GCG comments and with the Mueller Associates comments. So I believe that's already been taken care of.
Yeah, I can speak to the one question that our our member had and that the the comment goes back to and actually didn't really pertain to the to this. I more had a question from Mike Carter, who is the principal of GCG. So actually, I reached out to Mike Carter and it actually dates back to two thousand and two when GCG first looked at this site. And I think it just would made note that that the water infrastructure that is that is there on site has the ability to handle the stormwater. Verbally, I was able to talk to Mike over the phone and I did follow up with an email, but I did not receive anything in writing from him and 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 member Gerlitz. That's why I I have not been able to kind of contact you back on that one, because I was waiting for something in writing. But but Mike's comment really comes back from really a a review of the project back from two thousand and two when this building was actually built, making note that the stormwater should be should be reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission. And so since then, I don't believe we've had any. I think and it was really from the infiltration of the rain, the the, excuse me, the roof drains into the proposed plan. I I was, I I reached back out to Mike today, but I was unable, I was unsuccessful. And so that's where I was able to 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 end it. But but the comment goes back and and I believe that the applicant has been, you know, has has made sufficient. The plans as proposed are sufficient with the with the with the smaller building as proposed.
Can I address that further, Peter?
Please do. And I think also just to note, Scott, the question kind of went back to a little bit of the the history is because back in two thousand and two, and and Scott, maybe you want to talk about it, is that you guys did indoor own the property in the rear. And maybe we can talk about some of the steps that you took with the Conservation Commission to clear up and resolve any outstanding issue.
All right, so we did get our approvals from the Conservation Commission. We have our stormwater permit. We did a full drainage analysis of the existing condition on the site. As you guys know, it's a much bigger building with a lot more pavement. That drainage system that exists on site was designed for that larger build out, if you will. At that time, we looked at what it was designed for and then we've since revised the plan to reduce the building size, reduce the amount of impervious on site, obviously increasing green space. We also went to the effort of doing a full, another basically maintenance opportunity last last fall. So we did analyze what was done on site. We had the catch basins cleaned. We had the stormwater quality unit, which is the bore technics unit cleaned out and vacuumed and did a, you know, complete inspection of the system. So the system's been working fine for quite a while and with the new plan in front of you, it'll work even better. The O and M plan that was submitted, the the owner's on board with it. He's got that to work for as well. So I think the stormwater has been addressed through conservation and with all the review engineers that have looked at it. And it's been an improvement since what was approved earlier. So.
So so what are we missing here from the design review committee? I mean, I I hear things about the O and M plan, which apparently is out there. We just make sure, we need to make sure we have it.
You do.
We hear possible needing possibly more information about screening, fencing, vegetation between the corner of the lot, maybe where it says industrial, near Summer Street and the park across, like to understand, we can see that there's a few trees planted along Summer Street, but then there's this this area just called that just labeled industrial with some existing vegetation. We don't really know what that what that is. Are those are those our questions? Are those, are we looking for additional information about those photographs, about what's going on there now? If we want to leave it the way it is, if it's
There is a landscape plan within your filings and there was a rendering of what this will look like in your filings as well. The the two sites that we gathered at your request, my reaction to my client when I saw those was, wow, those are really stark. And thank goodness, ours are significantly augmented, A, B of the natural amenities of the site and characteristics, and be enhanced by the landscaping that's set forth on the landscaping plan.
Those images so that we can see them today?
You have them. Peter, can you find that in your filing?
Uh, yeah, it's just gonna take me a second. Sorry.
One of the items to discuss to the area in the rear of the store, there's a large wetland, well, there's a wetland back there. That's all a wooded area. And the parcel to the east was part of the original project that was sold off, I would say, ten or twelve years ago to the now current butter. We've met with them. They know what we're proposing. They're happy with what we're proposing. There is basically wooded areas between the two butters that we join. So there's screening that's already there on site. We're not touching any of those trees back there. I don't think we're cutting down any trees on this property.
So the butter, the butter along
Both the butter on Union Street and the butter on Summer Street.
Prefer that the that vegetation where you have it very marked very generally, prefer that that vegetation stay as it is, is that?
That's true. And that little triangle that you were pointing to, adjacent to our butter on Summer Street, originally we had proposed putting in a buyer retention area or rain garden, which would have been cutting down twelve trees. And that was removed earlier on in our process through design review. So those trees are gonna stay as is and remain as a screen.
Okay.
Hey, step in here to the application team. I I I believe these are the renderings that were, that was dated seven, excuse me, nine twenty seven. I believe these were the latest renderings from here. This would be the south elevation, which would be the front. The rear elevation on top, the the north elevation.
Is the east, is the east elevation the one facing Union Street? Is that?
They, correct, yes. This would be the the as the the queue line would circle the east elevation. The west elevation would be facing Summer Street.
I guess I'm wondering for me is like, why can't the, why can't the east elevation look a little bit more like the west elevation? Not in terms of the glass, but in terms of that beige brick with is not appealing on the images that we've seen from the other Starbucks. Right? Union Street is a major street. You know, so why why can't the finishes, the better finishes kind of swing around to that side? The drive through side is just facing obviously a wall and woods and it probably doesn't matter, but that would be my question on these. I I noticed it on on the other, the examples provided too, that you have kind of this very banal box kind of attached to, you know, something that has a very nice finish and it's a very obvious line.
Can I add to that?
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, please do. Go for it.
No, just listening to to Tricia's comment, that makes sense facing that street, but also if we're gonna have our roof access ladder, maybe that's not the place to put it. I mean, it would be probably better if what we're we're on on the elevation that faces the the wetland, I would say.
Yeah, on that long backside that no one sees.
Because it's otherwise is very utilitarian view for a very major road. So yeah, I think those are good comments in my view.
So what I was gonna say is I'm looking at these renderings and I I I'm gonna be very direct. I'm seeing a Starbucks that I could see anywhere, maybe in Framingham or downtown Natick, not downtown Natick, Route Nine in Natick, like a drive through and on Route Nine in Natick. This reminds me a lot of that one. And it doesn't really feel like Ashland. It feels like Route Nine in Framingham or Natick. So one of the things I keep coming to is the bylaw doesn't say, feel free to build something that is better than what was there before, right? And that's it. It doesn't say that. The bylaw gives us some authority to think about the identity of Ashland. And we have to think about this particular business and who we're dealing with. And I and I do think it's important to understand the resources that Starbucks has. And we don't need to just build a Framingham Route Nine drive. We can build an Ashland Starbucks. We can build something that looks like the rendering scream Ashland. And what could that look like is a question I would like to ask this board. I think for me, what that looks like is something that blends into that environment in a way that is consistent with who we are as a community, with our comprehensive plan, with our net zero initiative, with the visual of what I see in our community, which is a community that respects history, respects green space. Stone Park has a lot of color and texture, if you will, that could be an inspiration as to what this could look like. And Starbucks has built incredible Starbucks's in multiple locations around the world that don't look like a Framingham, Natick, Route Nine drive through, which is what I'm looking at right now. And, you know, I'm looking at renderings from Starbucks's in Los Angeles, in Las Vegas, in Idaho, that honor the natural resources of those spaces that look like those communities. If Starbucks can do it in Idaho, why can they not do it here? And and I do want to share some visuals because I think that's important. And Peter, could I share my screen?
Please, yeah.
And how would I do that?
So I'm gonna make you So I've stopped my screen share and and you can hit the green button, share screen
Gotcha.
bottom. And then
Yeah, hopefully you guys can see that. So that's in Ketchum, Idaho. Can you guys see that?
No, we can't see.
No, you can just see yourself. Got it. All right. Let me try that again. How about now?
Nope.
No. Okay, so this is two. Let me flip the numbers. Like, I got this. Oh, boy. All right, let me try differently. Can you guys see that?
No, you should be, you should be clicking on share screen and then picking the one that you want us to see.
That's what you would think, except when I pick on it, let me try that.
How's that? Something's happening.
Amazing. All right. Ketchum, Idaho. That's a Starbucks, guys, that looks like Ketchum, Idaho, right? Chicago, obviously, these are city shots, but Austin, Texas, that to me, I can almost smell the beer. New Orleans, right? Look at, look at all, I mean, this, we're talking interior design as well, which we have not discussed yet. But some of this is is very clearly exterior as well. Starbucks is fully capable. Look at this one in Los Angeles. That to me is very LA, right? You've got that nineteen sixties retro style. So
It's important to know that this one, that 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 one was going into a retro gas station, right? It's a, it's a reuse.
Sure, but we've got Stone Park right next to this, which could be a motivation, an inspiration to how this design works. And so again, I I'm perplexed that we are not seeing an Ashland Starbucks. We're seeing, again, I'm seeing exactly what I see at a drive through, the one in Natick, on either Natick or Framingham on Route Nine that you can drive through. That's what this looks like. This is not Route Nine. This is smack in the middle of Ashland, right next to Stone Park. We can create something here consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the aesthetic of what our community represents. And this particular applicant should be able to do it.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
I can't tell.
Oh, I'm I'm done.
Who? I can't get my eye on who is, who's asking the question.
It's Scott.
Okay, yes, please.
And I've said this to all the boards that we've been to. I've said this to the design review board. I said it to the zoning board of appeals. And I believe we've said it to you guys. This is not a Starbucks owned property. This is owned by a gentleman who's a local developer. So people see on the title block and they see Starbucks and they think it's an open checkbook. This is a different situation. Starbucks is a tenant. They pay rent. There's an agreement, hopefully, that Starbucks will adhere to where they're gonna pay rent to a local developer. So I think people are misunderstanding the fact that Starbucks is your client, is your yes, of the end user, but they're not, they're not the owners. So it's a whole different discussion that we're having about Idaho. And I don't really understand why that
Hold up, hold up. Starbucks is gonna make money here, right? Starbucks is moving in as a tenant to do a business transaction. Starbucks is in negotiation as well.
They're not the applicant.
But they're, but they're negotiating with the applicant for that lease.
Mr. Efrain, but we're gonna take
Let me finish. They're negotiating with the applicant for the terms of that lease.
Mr. Efrain, we're gonna take turns.
They're gonna sit there and they're gonna say, I'm Starbucks and I only want to pay a hundred bucks, a hundred bucks a month because you guys are forcing me to do X, Y, or Z. That's the negotiation. So I I it's it's not, I find it to be disingenuous to say, oh, Starbucks can't do anything here. That is not accurate. You can, you can in fact negotiate a lease that is consistent with the requirements of this community.
The lease
Starbucks can honor that.
It's already been negotiated. It's it's not for discussion. And it's also not planning board's responsibility to discuss leases.
If you're telling me that we are stuck with this as is, I have every right to tell you my opinion, which is I disagree. I think that there is a negotiation. If you're telling me you already negotiated everything, well, that's a really important transparency discussion. And what I'm telling you is the bylaw does not say we have to accept the project as is. It does give us discretion.
I'd also like to say that we've been to Design Review Commission, which I believe is your your board that discusses landscaping, lighting, architecture, and they happen to love this particular project. We went to them for two meetings. We discussed things. We made changes to the We went to them for two meetings. We discussed things. We made changes to the plan. We reduced parking areas. We made more green space. They weren't thrilled with lawn areas, so we made pollinator gardens. We've we've made changes for months and months on this project. To go from a ten thousand square foot pharmacy with. Seventy five parking spaces and five percent green space to a twenty five hundred square foot building with. Thirty five parking spaces, a lot more green space. A great landscape plan, an attractive building. And I I think we've done everything that we've been asked to by this town. Fire department, every single group that we've talked to.
I think I think that's I think that's true, except for the some of the comments that originated. With the first planning board meeting of this project, including Anna's comments. About what does this building look like? How does it not be so generic? Now, I'm I think there's a I think there's a a. A middle ground here between um some of the images that were shown, which should also be very not Ashland. And um, you know, and how do we make this building look its look its best? Um, you you know, I I. I cringe a little bit if we're gonna say what's Ashland and we have a mansard roof on this thing or something like that, you know? So I I think we there's. I think there's a there's a middle ground that that we're looking for, that how do we improve what we're seeing, especially I think on the Union Street side? Um, how do we take some of the best features that are in more of the normal vocabulary of a Starbucks um versus having a whole complete redesign for this area, which is like you said, it's a lease, not an own. And maybe come, maybe maybe next year it's a Dunkin' Donuts because it doesn't work out as a Starbucks, right? Um, so you you know, so so then what are the qualifications? I mean, yes, you have responded to everything except. Perhaps some of the early planning board questions, which maybe did not get looked at. And then so they're coming back, right? They're 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 coming back. So I think a lot of the landscape ones, hold on Kathy, I think one of the I think a lot of the landscape ones have been thoroughly discussed and we haven't really. Looked that much at the building itself. Remember, this is the only the. What is it? The third time that the planning board has seen this project? So um. And there's been quite a few gaps between Kathy, if you have a comment, I will allow it at this time.
That would be great. Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate it, Madam Chair. So um. We. Got this project where we thought we could get it. Um. But we by no means love it, and I think that's disingenuous for. I I was lost track of who was saying, who was speaking. Um, so my apologies, but but we we don't love this. And we have asked for a couple of other things. We asked for more trees. Specifically in the parking lot. Um. Uh, I think that we think the pollinator garden is an interesting addition, but I I personally think that they're going to have. A great deal of difficulty maintaining it, which is going to present a problem in the future. As to what this looks like and get both of our committees blowback in the future if it doesn't get maintained properly because they're extremely difficult to maintain. Um. What I remember specifically asking for was actually something called Eco Grass because it's much more carbon friendly, requires a lot less mowing. Blah, blah, blah. But specifically. In addition to the additional trees, we've asked for renderings of. What that Starbucks would look like when you come. From Hopkin Town down Union Street and what are people going to see? Because we had asked originally for a lot more trees in that apex triangle. So I'm just gonna leave you with that, but those are are our comments. And thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So i- is that something that um is that something the applicant can provide? We are we are concerned. Obviously, this is a major intersection. I I think some of the I think a lot of the issues have been resolved, but there's something that just isn't sitting well, I think. Um. With at least part of the board on this, how do we make it? This is a real opportunity and we don't want it to be done. We don't want to be half baked. So um. So is there? Is is the applicant willing to take a another pass at this and look at the comments as a whole and not just some of the comments? Cause I I don't that I don't think that all the comments have been addressed. I think some have been skipped. So.
That's that's my impression. I feel like I keep saying the same thing every time. I I feel like other members of the board say, I agree with you, Anna. And then we get another uh meeting where we're told, oh. You just have to accept it as is. Everybody loves it. And um and Starbucks can do nothing. So. Have you truly asked Starbucks if they can do this? Have you conveyed to Starbucks? Hey, the planning board seems to really like the idea of making this design more Ashland characteristics. They want to change how it looks. They want to do more green elements. Have you actually told them this?
Can I speak?
Yes.
Um, yes, we have. Uh, they are. They were pretty adamant about having this particular prototype. We've talked about this thing for months. You did make some comments, Anna, but they weren't specific. They were just general and it's hard even the the prior. Uh applicant. He said the same thing, like you're making general comments, like how do we respond to those things? We've had that rendering. We've had this plan in place almost since day one. And this is now we're kind of at the eleventh hour and now we're hearing that it's not acceptable.
No, it's something that's it's not, but it. That it's not the first time. Hold on. So this is what now we're getting. We've been talking about other things. Now we're getting specific about this. I think last time we were having this meetings. I think I cut things off because the conversation was getting too heated. It sounds like we're getting very close there again. I think the main. Part for me and others on the planning board can 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 weigh in on this. I think the main part for me is that. Is that Union Street elevation, which is a critical elevation, basically looks like a back elevation and is ignored in this. So and 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 there may be other elements that can. You you know, I mean, Starbucks has a obviously many different iterations of their plans. I'm not sure I agree with Anna that this has to be some kind of um custom store suited that's. That's Ashland in this particular project. Um, but I but I think there's again, there's um. There's there's a little bit more work to do on this before we're before we're happy with this project. So um. Anyone else on the board who hasn't? Hasn't weighed in is, you know, how what's your general feeling on the project? What? What's missing? Otherwise, I would ask the applicant to consider the things that have been discussed today. Um, and and we'll need to continue it.
If if that's what you decide, there's not anything you can do about it. I'm just not sure.
I mean, I mean, this is this is what this is where it's tricky. On the other, on the one hand, you're saying you. You're you're just starting to understand the specifics of what we're throwing at you. On the other hand, you're saying we've already discussed it all with Starbucks. We can do nothing. So which one is it? If these are new ideas that you are starting to kind of hear from us and you're saying. This is coming to us out of left field, then let's present those ideas to Starbucks and truly understand if it's not possible.
I I think I think we don't want to get argumentative here. I think it's about the specific maybe request is that. The the Union Street side needs work, needs to look not like a back, but as it needs to look like a third front. In some way. And um. And and that the the building should tie together in some. It, you know, have some kind of character. Right? I mean, I I I like I said, I'm not as I'm not as opposed to Anna is about this particular style. Um. I don't I don't see this as a destination building in Ashland. I could hear from the rest of the planning board. Um, but maybe more thought needs to be put into that until next time, but we're not gonna reach any conclusions today. I I'm pretty sure about that. So um, Peter, I think we're looking for a continuance here. I don't think we're gonna make any more headway tonight.
Um, Trish, can I just offer like? I I think you're just gonna send that letter to the um applicant, but I wanted to. I I think we should just um maybe. I wasn't sure about the fence. Are they asking? For a taller fence or they don't want a taller fence? So I I personally didn't understand that and I'd like to make sure that we're clear in those issues and that at least we have um. That they're.
A- as we have had in the past from, say, the five oh one Pond Street project, we can ask for. We can ask the applicant to get emails or letters from the abutters about the decisions they have made between them. We have done that before and we've had such letters delivered to the planning board.
No, you um, no. Well, that's not a bad idea, but I'm talking about we received, I believe it just came today from an email. From Peter that was, I believe, either hand delivered or mail from an abutter or nearby.
That letter came in and that letter was sent out to the applicant. I think I may have missed the email about something else just with with everything going on. It's uh. Trying to keep all the balls in the air as.
Yeah, no. So what I would, I guess my question is, I'm not sure I understood every issue from the applicant and maybe Peter had some conversation. So if that's going to be passed to the applicant, I'd like to make sure that's clear.
Think what the what the what the a butter is looking for is an eight foot fence.
Okay, that's what I didn't know if they did want it or they did want it. I did.
They did. They want it. They want they they they're they're major. I think their major element is to have an eight foot fence of budding. Uh, that rear property line instead of a six foot fence.
Is that from the is that from the abutter it's themselves? Because they have said that they had talked to the abutters.
No, they talked to me. Uh, she's uh the the person come came in and talked to me and. And that's the best way to to get this information. Put something to writing, obviously for the record. And they did so and they hand delivered to the office yesterday and. Scanned it in and I sent it to the planning board along with the with the applicant.
But when you say in a butter, it's the direct a butter next to.
This person would be a direct, but this person is I can confirm is is a uh. Uh, a a direct a butter in the into our personal standing.
So I I guess my point, Trish, I apologize. I don't have two screens on my laptop to bring it up to read, but I think. We should make sure those issues are discussed now if we're asking the applicant to relook at issues. I think those should be.
There you go.
I think we need verification between the direct abutters on the property line of what was asked for and what was agreed to by the applicant. Is that what you're saying as well?
Um, yes, but it seems like if they bothered to write that that was not addressed. So.
No, I I agree.
Separate issues. And yes, I would a hundred percent agree with that.
I agree. I want to make sure the story is consistent between the a butter and the applicant, right?
Yeah. So and then I I don't think we need to keep going because I think you sort of gave the direction, but I am going to be on the side of I. I was very excited when brought the very first planning board meeting. I believe all five of us said we were excited about this, what this can bring to Ashland and tie into Stone Park. And I I. I'm I'm sure we can do better and I I want to repeat that, even if Trish um doesn't entirely agree with that. And then I do think a specific, because it may have gotten lost. I I think we have to consider how dumpsters emptying with that log. You know, seven day week long schedule. Related to a queue related to noise. So I I think we have to. We have to discuss about that as well.
I I think.
Tonight, but I mean, the next time.
Yeah, I think whatever that is as a part of the conditions. I'm not sure what you're thinking about Stone Park. I'm not, but but that's okay. We don't need to go into it now. Um, I do. We'll take I will take the public comment from these two hands that are up. I'm not gonna let it go longer than that because again, now it's nine thirty. So um.
Uh, first, I'm gonna let uh. Town manager Michael Hurwitz speak.
Thanks, everybody. Um. Just actually, I I have really just one question. So to the applicant. So if you choose to continue with this. Um, do you feel like you have enough feedback on the design that you can actually take that information and. Work something up that you could present to Starbucks and then back to the planning board? Do you feel like you have enough information?
No.
Just there hasn't been enough specific direction?
No. Not on not on the design. This is the first time we're hearing about the design. And I mean, you can go back and look at your minutes. There was some connection, Anna. That was it. But the does we've had this design and we've had these renderings out for months. So this is the first time we hearing it. If so, the answer is no, we don't specifically know what you're looking for.
So I mean, I can I can share a photo of Stone Park with you, which has the, you know, these large rock rock structures. It's got that. That pine brown, you know, the the rich green trees. You're right next to it and you can look at it. There's got to be a way to implement into the design some of those elements, the natural elements that are right there. Um, you know, I I we can all listen to the first hearing if you wish, but I do recall some consistency about. The communal kind of feeling of that site. We talked about. I remember talking about the Boston Marathon, the Stone Park, the people coming in between these these areas so that the. The families that come to Stone Park might want to also stop at the Starbucks. I remember talking about Ned Zero. And then I remember the second meeting being like, oh, we went to design review and we're done. We're not gonna change anything. That's how I remembered the last meeting.
We never said that.
No.
So so I think, I mean, I think one of the. The things that we always try to balance, right, is we always talk about we want commercial business here, you know, especially as it relates to residential. We want commercial. But. I think what's also important, and I think the planning board is making this point, is that we don't necessarily want that at any cost. Um. Uh, you know, a deficient design or something that's not necessarily Ashland. I think a couple of things are really important. I think if um. You know, we have a business incentive program, if. You know, it's a matter of cost, if if you know, that's something that we could work with the applicant on that might make it a little bit more palatable. I think that, you know, we're certainly willing to do that. Um, but at the same time, I think it's really important for the applicant to have some specific direction, so they aren't kind of flailing in the wind. And coming back and not necessarily presenting what the planning board wants. I think, you know, those are those are two pretty important points.
Mi- Michael, I would I I would I thank you for 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 the comment. I I would say that uh I I think Anna and Tricia kind of. Gave two 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 different views of of what 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 was being asked. I believe that the 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 view that I believe was. Specific enough, and I don't know why it's being said now that there was there's nothing specific. Um, I think this is a specific request that the building is a three sided building. Uh, and right now the design is showing just two sides that are developed as 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 a welcoming side and 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 two sides that basically the back of the building. One of them um basically directed towards Union Street with an access ladder. And um and 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 materials that are not um as attractive as the other two sides. I think the 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 request that I heard. Seems pretty straightforward to me is. There's some modifications. And I mean, I'm an architect. I I I don't think there's anything outlandish in what's being asked here. Uh, there's some modifications that can be made so that the building really appears as as attractive or welcoming to the public in all three sides that the public way. Um, views it. That seems specific to me. Uh, the the we we could add some some other specific areas. Now, what Anna is referring to is is a little more bigger picture of introducing other components. And and that could be al- also part of it. But I think the building part was pretty specific, so I want to make sure that that was heard that way by the applicant.
Right? Definitely. We definitely heard that.
And I'll also add.
Heard that elevation. And we heard Tricia say that the building in general it is acceptable, I guess, or she likes.
I I didn't.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I didn't use those words.
Okay, but.
But I said, you know, it it's a Starbucks. I I I do think there can be. A second look at materials, uh, you know, if if there's a way to make it. You know, I I guess I'm saying I'm not sure what the the Ashland look. Is so there's no way we can tell you this because I don't frankly.
That's my point. How do we go from here?
Exactly.
How do we do that?
So if we can question, if we can just question the materials at the Starbucks has a large palette of materials and from different locations. I'm not gonna take any other comments besides Chris's comment. And and then that will hap- that will. Just start look, you know, seeing what other alternatives are there within the within the typical palette without redesigning a custom building, which I'm I'm not sure that's what we're asking for. So at this time, I want to take the one he- the one hand that has been up, Peter, and then we're we're gonna continue.
Can I make a suggestion, Tricia, as far as resource?
Yep, very.
So you know, I think Michael's points are spot on that there are certain support mechanisms that Ashland could offer, and we have resources in the town of Ashland, whether it's our economic development person, Beth Reynolds. Or our business community. Um, and we have the historic society. We have all kinds of elements that are a resource to. Or our business community, um, and we have the historic society, we have all kinds of elements that are a resource to Starbucks and the applicant. To explore what elements, I'm not suggesting, Tricia, that we have that. Ashland Starbucks that is everything that Ashland is in one place, right? What I'm suggesting is that there surely is a better way than literally to cut and paste. The Starbucks drive through on Route Nine, we can do better than that. And there are elements in our community and, and the resources we have within our town and, and. Michael Herbert is here and he's one such resource that could offer guidance as to what are some of those elements, what, what is the history of Ashland? There is a rich history here, um, and perhaps that can be implemented into the design, whether it's external or internal.
Peter, can we take the one question that I will take from Mr. Gazzard?
Uh, yes, Mr. Gazzard, please uh, unmute yourself and, and uh, put your name and address into the record, please.
Thank you so much, Chris Gazzard, twenty one Park Road, Ashland. Um, thank you, Trisha, for taking my call. Uh, so I wanna, are, are we done with traffic? Have, is, is that off the table? Um, what I noticed is three exits and only one entrance on Summer. And being a downtown resident and right there, I mean, I can see Walgreens from here. Um. I want to understand like that, that is a very dangerous intersection, as we all know, um, tragically. And the coming off of one thirty-five down into Summer, where you decide whether you're gonna veer left to go up Cherry or down into Summer. And then coming off of Park Road up Summer. Uh, the, I think we're just, I mean, this is a nightmare, this is, I, I, I can't even begin to, it's not, it's not traffic. Uh, idling in the, i- i- in the drive through, it's more of that, that, that's gonna be crazy. I mean. You guys, you guys all live here, you know what that intersection looks like, Jerry, you, you're, you're up the road, I mean, what are we doing? This, this, to me, that's what I need help on. If uh, if we've already closed up, that there's, there's not gonna be a traffic issue. Uh, I, I didn't hear that, so that's kind of what I want to know. Thank you.
Yeah, that was actually the very first part of the project, actually bef- before, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but I think even before it came before the planning board. It went through a review from the Ashland Traffic Engineer and our Consulting Engineers GCG, they went through um, multiple rounds. Of looking at all the safety issues, and so that was before it even got to the planning board, before we even reviewed it for the first time, so. Um, you haven't seen it on here because it has already gone through. That the review by various levels of expertise outside of the planning board. So, does that summarize it, Peter?
That's correct, you know, I think we all, we, the applicant worked with our engineer and we kind of went through it. The exit was shut, the exit was, uh, the entrance off of Union was closed to exit only. To minimize the uh, traffic and moving around the building into the bypass lane. And coming through the parking lot and doing the pinch point at the entrance. It was agreed upon by both traffic engineers that this is the safest plan uh, for the site uh, aspect.
What's plan, what's plan B though?
No, at this time, I am looking for a motion to um, to uh, continue this to a later date. What date, Peter?
So I sort of be in agreement with uh, the uh, applicant and Mr. Efron that the uh, that we can continue this. Uh, I believe um, the next meeting is January twenty-sixth. Uh, and then the following meeting will be February ninth, uh, depending on how your team wants to proceed with the comments I heard from the planning board tonight.
Well, I think it will be easy to make a determination relatively quickly. As to whether Starbucks will authorize a significant change in the design of the building. On, I'm, I'm really not trying to favor one comment over another, but the consensus was is that the side facing Union Street. Should be readdressed. And so I think that's a matter for us to go make an inquiry. If we make the inquiry, uh, we can produce something. If we can make the inquiry and we can't, um, that's also a result. So I think, and I had previously sent you a letter of uh, extensions through the twenties, I said through after the twenty-sixth. Because we were hoping that we would be potentially further along tonight than we are, but that's okay, but I think the twenty-sixth would be good.
And I would advise the applicant not to take that three sided building superficially. And not to disregard Anna's comments about what else can be done with the character of this building, that will be noted. If those things are, are done um, superficially or ignored.
And I'll add Jerry that there was at least four planning board members just now that were nodding their heads, so if you're looking for consensus, you've got it on that point as well.
All right, so we are continuing this until when, the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, thank you.
Twenty-sixth. Kate, you want to give me a motion? I make a motion that we consider the uh, hearing for three ninety-nine Union Street to January twenty-sixth. And a roll call vote.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye. Catherine Jersey, aye.
My name, Tricia Kendall, and so we are continuing that to the twenty-sixth and the planning board is taking a five minute break to nine. Thirty-nine. Thirty-four Albert, Albert Ray Drive, getting sick of this address, special permit, T-Mobile.
Yes, so I will introduce um, Mr. Timothy Green. So Timothy Green, how are you? Please introduce. Just to get going here, I do have to read the public record into the comments, so just please hold with me. The actual planning board will hold a public hearing on January twelfth, thousand twenty-three at seven fifteen P M via Zoom video conference. To hear the petition of T-Mobile Northeast Caro, current search, uh, one ninety-seven Riverside Drive, Norrolo Max. Requesting a special permit modification per chapter two eighty-two, section six point four wireless communication facility. Of the town of Ashland bylaws, the applicant seeks to modify the existing special permit for the removal and replacement of antennas and auxiliary equipment. The code location will be aesthetically consistent with the existing structure and antennas. The proposal includes the installation of five G capable uh, equipment to the tower. The property in question is located at thirty-four Albert Ray Drive, a site of Mot nine, Lot one seventy-three in the residential A Zone District. Parties which should be heard may see the submitted comment at the planning board to the planning board and to appear at the time and place uh. Included in the public notice. Materials can be seen on the town of Ashland website and by a town hall by appointment during normal business hours. And or uh, for more information, they can contact myself at my phone number in my email. Uh, before we get going and before Tim, uh, you can jump in, I just want to please note that this uh, notice was sent to both abutters. In Ashland and in Birmingham with the three hundred feet uh, of parties of notice as we did for all three other uh, cases. Uh, and this is similar that they are, uh, in this case, T-Mobile is looking to pull down. Uh, excuse me, not pull down, but to remove uh, equipment, uh, and then brief, uh, then replace that with uh, new equipment. By T-Mobile. Uh, with that, I can please now hand this over to Mr. Tim Green. Uh, Mr. Green, please step forth and introduce yourself and uh, fill in any gaps they may have uh, not covered.
Uh, thank you. Again, my name is uh, Tim Green here on behalf of uh, T-Mobile, who is the carrier. As well as Crown Castle, who is the owner of the tower, uh, and looking at your previous uh. Uh, agendas, uh, you're very familiar with this, so um. Thirty-four Albert Ray Drive has a tower, there are now four carriers on it and everybody's upgrading their equipment. T-Mobile's number four, uh, they are the second, um, it's a hundred foot tower. And they are the second carrier down, so they're at around ninety-four feet. And they currently have six antennas in the tower, they're gonna replace those six antennas. And add three additional antennas uh, at the same height. The structural analysis that has been included includes all of the previous. Uh, upgrades to the tower, so it is the most up to date one and includes the uh, changes that AT&amp;T and Verizon did as well as the Dish.
Will you bring up those drawings, Peter?
Installation. And um, that's pretty much it. I mean, it's uh, nationwide network upgrades, everyone's doing it. And um, you know, just uh, I can answer any specific questions about the equipment, uh, the who and the why.
Uh, please bear with me, I'm just grabbing the uh, plans.
Yep, while those open, any general questions from the planning board?
Oh, I, I would just have one, one comment, Tricia. It, it seems to me that, uh, I mean, we've been through this uh, several times now. And I think the issue was always proper, we, we know what, 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 what the regulations are. Uh, the issues were always proper, um, um. Publishing of the information to the abutters in both, in both towns, which this, this time around, I think, was achieved ahead of time. So um, barring any difference from there, um, I don't know that we need to, to, to. Discuss much this, in my opinion, we, we, we should vote on the merits that we already know.
Yep, I understood. Um, if we can just point out on the drawings, the, the ones that um.
Sure, uh, good, how about three more pages, Peter? That's the site plan, that's the ground, go back up one. And right about there, let that clear up and on the left, if you zoom in. Um, these plans were done before Dish went on, so Dish is, is down there, um, and then the next one's AT&amp;T. That um, center one is, the next one is T-Mobile and the top one is Verizon. And on the right hand side here, um, you're looking at a, uh, you're looking straight down, bird's eye view down. You can see the six antennas and those arms will be replaced with a, a mount to hold the new antennas, similar to the other equipment.
So you're taking down six and putting up nine, is that what you said?
That's correct. That's pretty standard, AT&amp;T has nine, uh, Verizon, uh, AT&amp;T has twelve, Verizon has twelve. T-Mobile has nine, Dish is three, but it, it really depends on what you're trying to do, that, that's not uncommon to have. Anywhere from, you know, three to twelve antennas.
Right. Any comments from the board?
No.
All right. And someone want to make a motion? Um, I just, can you just make sure there's no public comments, I'm. Oh, yep. And no, that's a good, that's a good comment. Are there any um, public comments, comments from the public on this um, on this public hearing? All right, seeing none. Um, I make a motion that we approve the application thirty-four Albert Ray Drive special permit for T-Mobile.
Seconded.
Sorry, under all call vote.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye. And Tricia Kendall, you have set a world record, Mr. Green.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Green, uh, I'll be drafting the decision, I'll probably be sending it out to the planning board, then they'll sign it. Uh, and uh, so we'll work through that process.
Very good.
All right, thank you so much, thank you for your patience.
All right, thank you.
Have a great night.
All right, next on our agenda is the Village at Clocktown Preliminary Subdivision fifty-eight. All right, next on our agenda is the Village at Clocktown Preliminary Subdivision fifty-eight Exchange Street. This was continued from, I'm not sure when.
This was continued from December fifteenth uh at that last past meeting. Um, excuse me, uh to introduce the village of the Clocktowns. This is a preliminary subdivision which was continued from, excuse me, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The applicant, uh um uh the applicant in this case is uh fifty-eight uh Exchange Ashland LLC and Ashland Chestnut Realty. Tonight, they're uh again um represented by Andrew, attorney Andrew Confortier uh of F R E Building Company. Uh with that said, at the last meeting, uh we discussed the preliminary site plan. Uh this is a zoning free mechanism that was filed prior to the date of the adoption of the uh the building moratorium. Uh there was a question at the last meeting that was then uh which the board requested town council review from Lisa Mead. Um, and that question regarding the uh is this plan a subdivision and and how does it meet the regulations was was presented to attorney Mead. Um and then attorney Mead got back to us in an email which has been distributed to both the planning board and the applicant on Wednesday, uh January fourth. Um, and I am not going to read it into the public record, and that's where we stand with an update.
I'm sorry, Peter, you said you are not going to read it into the public record?
Well, would you like me to read Lisa's email into the public record?
Um, I I think it would, oh.
Sure, I I think it's fairly short. I I was gonna say, I've reviewed it, so I I I think if others have, we probably don't need to read it, but.
I was just for a sake of matter of time in me mumbling through an email, I thought I would. Uh, I took that.
No, I I agree. I I I read it and and she she confirms that 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 is um legal and and advised by the regulations, so I I don't think we need.
All right, good time. So we're we're good, so um do we want to? We don't need to read the regular, read the, read the email from attorney Mead, but um do we need to bring up the site plan? Do we have more questions about that?
Uh, just.
Can you bring it up just so that refresh our memory of what we're looking at here?
Yep, I just gotta grab it. I don't have it open.
Yep.
There's in the meantime, we could ask if there's public comments, so we can get.
Oh, yeah.
Doc, okay.
Thanks, Kate. Um, if anyone has been waiting to have public comment on this preliminary subdivision, the village at Clocktown, please raise your hand.
This is a preliminary subdivision. As you see, this is the uh parcel of land in the front where my cursor is. Uh and that is the land that is uh that new public safety building is being built on. The land that is the within the preliminary subdivision is uh borders the uh the lot and follows my cursor and then go around the perimeter. And then it proposes the road A uh right here off a Union Street. I see the applicant is here, uh representing the applicant, Mr. Confortier, attorney Confortier. Do you have any uh items that you would like to bring to the planning board's attention?
Um, not tonight. I mean, if the the planning board has comments on the plan or um i- if Dale has anything to add, I think it's just a pretty straightforward subdivision road and two lots.
If there's nothing.
Seems to me that we've adequately addressed the board's concerns. That's my position on this as far as the town council letter.
Okay, then I would uh remind the board that this is a preliminary subdivision, um that it is non-binding, the planning board decision on it is non-binding. And um um now we go forward from there, so.
We can make a motion, Tricia, that we approve the Village at Clocktown Preliminary Subdivision fifty-eight Exchange at Ashland.
I'll second.
Under all call vote.
Deep going to die.
Anna Tesmenitsky, I.
Also, I.
As an Jersey guy.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So that is approved.
Okay, Angela, as you know, I'd be ready in decision, uh and I will be collecting signatures from the planning board uh over the next week or two, and once I have those, I you and I will convene contact. And then obviously, you 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 well aware know that the next step would be a preliminary subdivision.
Yeah, the definitive, yeah.
Excuse me. The definitive.
I do want to thank uh the applicant for patience in uh are getting counsel opinion.
My pleasure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item F, uh under public hearings, this is scenic road public hearing, thirty-four High Street, stone wall opening.
Correct, so this is the project uh which is new, however. I believe on December first, we uh we reviewed A and R and we approved the A and R for for a property. Uh, and tonight is a uh just a public hearing. And, excuse me, Mr. uh Matt Labrie is here uh to represent this. However, it's a public hearing, so I'm going to read this into the record. Please bear with me. In accordance with the provisions of the Ashland Stadium by, excuse me, Road by law, the Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three at seven fifteen P M in the Union Conference. Uh to hear the petition of Meredith and Dango Huff for the Scenic Road application proposing to open a portion of existing stone wall along the frontage of thirty-five, excuse me, thirty-four High Street. Create a new driveway access. The stones will be reused to create a natural return on both sides of the entrance. The stones will be dry stacked with no mortar, the match existing stone wall. The property in question is located at thirty-four High Street, assesses map thirteen, lot one sixty-three. And within the residential A Zone District. Parties which should be heard on this matter should submit comments to the planning board ahead of time and to appear at the time and place indicated above. Materials may be viewed at Ashland Town Hall and on the Ashland Town website, posted link provided. Or by appointment during uh normal business hours. For more information and to submit comments, please contact myself, town planner. Peter Matzek was my phone number and email address. And with that said, uh I am happy to bring up the uh plan. And the applicant has provided some pictures that I am happy to share as well. But at this time, I would like to hand over the uh the stage to Mr. Matt, uh Matthew Labrie, and fill in any blanks that I may have left out.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, uh hello, board, thank you for your time tonight. I know it's late. Um, it's a fairly simple um uh public hearing. Um, there's a pre-existing stone wall. Um, we're just looking to remove that.
Sorry, do we have that site plan that we should bring up?
Peter, you bring it up or?
Yeah, it's coming. One minute. Uh, hold up.
You can continue.
Oh.
I just.
Yeah, it's pretty much exactly what I described in the application. Is we're just putting an easement onto the lot. And it's going to be eighteen feet wide. Um, and if you look down a left-hand corner um down um, yep, yep, right where Peter is looking at. Peter, if you want to zoom in on that, that spot, you can kind of see where we we're planning on relocating the the stone walls um to create uh a nice natural entrance uh into that, that um, the lot that that's up behind it. Uh again, the the stone walls are, they're very old. Um, they're, you know, at one point, probably two hundred years ago, they're really nice stacked. But our plan is to, you know, restack them, uh no mortar, just like a natural New England stone wall, um just like you would see on any roadside. And with, over time, those stone walls will settle in back into the landscape, just like they they would with any other stone wall. Um the, all the stones will be used from um the site, so we're not importing any stones. But we do have pictures, like that's the existing stone wall on High Street. Um and it would look.
Like, I'm gonna roll through all six.
Yeah, you can, yeah, just you can just roll right through them, but.
Planning board has any items that we want to talk about through.
There, yeah, I can talk you through some of them, the um.
So is this just basically taking the stones that are currently in the, in two locations, they're they're in the way of the driveway? And you're adding them on to the end of the stone road? Did the 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 drawing show where there's, where the stones are going?
Yes, so if you look at the drawing.
Sorry, we can't see the screen anymore.
Oh.
I saw the marks removed, but I didn't see where they were ending.
Yeah, there's two of those that says propose new walls, so my question was, is is the, is is the work only right there at the inception of the easement or because along the way, the the there's two walls up higher on the sheet, but right here, right, right here on the inception of these access easement, you're turning the 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 stone wall sideways to create that new one, and then you're adding one on the opposite side, right?
Yeah, so it's where it says relocate existing stone wall.
Got it.
We're pretty much bringing that down to where it says proposed stone wall.
Hmm.
Correct, yep, and then turning it into that where it meets High Street right there. And then uh on the other side, um right, right where Peter's has his cursor, adding the stone walls up there. And one of the pictures I'm showing you is the 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 stone walls actually go into that lot. It's a very beautiful, like, New England picturesque um um entrance into there, right there, that's the shot, where you can see the stone walls on either side. And it's a very picturesque, that would be their, essentially, uh the new driveway location, um and their their house would be up right where Peter's cursor is, um up in that spot, so.
So so there's no, there's no work on these, on these walls on this side of the?
Those walls are staying just as as they are. Um, so our intention is to make them look just like that. Um, a lot of the stones that, when when we redid their septic system, a lot of stones, once you dig them out, they're literally four feet in diameter, just, it's like the tip of an iceberg. Um, so some of them will be machine moved because we just can't move a four-foot pole there by hand. Um, but we would like to set those below grade as much as possible. And then the the more manageable ones put on top, just to create that natural sturdy base and build up on top.
And Matt, it could be that it's ten o'clock and my brain starts to get slightly fried.
Okay.
But but I, I, can you make it very simple for me and just show me, where is the current driveway? Again, and where is the new one going to be instead?
So right where Peter's cursor is?
Yeah.
That's the new, that's the existing driveway.
Old one, okay.
This is for the existing driveway and for the.
Okay.
Right. And then.
Yep.
And then you see the words proposed driveway.
Okay.
On up to the left, yep, and Peter's showing you where that driveway is going to be.
And where is the scenic route?
High Street.
And are both driveways going to be on the scenic route?
Correct.
So this is where things get a little confusing for me, because I'm looking at the bylaw. And I just want to kind of walk through it, the the driveway design standards, right? Um, only one driveway cut per lot onto any scenic route shall be allowed. Are we looking at one lot or two?
Well, that, where the the driveway is going to be would be an access easement, not an actual driveway cut.
But there's two lots.
So there's two lots, though.
Correct.
Okay, so is each, so each lot is going to have its own driveway?
Correct.
Okay, and then um the new driveway on a scenic road shall not exceed twelve feet in width. Have we met that requirement?
Well, the accessway, the accessway is eighteen feet. But that's just so we can put a twelve-foot driveway and then um to have, you know, green space next to it for drainage and also a spot for utilities. So the actual driveway itself is not going to be more than twelve feet. But we just need to work to put, if we put the stones at twelve feet, it's too close to the driveway. So the the actual access easement would be eighteen, but the driveway itself would be twelve feet.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so if you look at the, there's a dimension that says eighteen feet, and that the driveway is inbound, yeah, go down. Yeah, see the eighteen feet, but the the driveway itself is is no more than twelve feet.
So as long as the driveway itself is no more than twelve feet, I'm satisfied.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that we're on the same page that we're, we've done that.
Um, but in in that, I think that same section is two forty-nine at twenty-two. So it says, um, or actually, maybe it's above in the definition, it says the stones can remove, removed no more than one feet.
Yeah, that was my next question about that. Where?
Yeah.
Stone wall sections to be removed from a driveway shall not exceed the driveway width by more than one foot on either side.
But that, is that at the scenic road, meaning that
Yeah.
at the inception of the driveway?
Uh. So presumably, you're removing from a driveway to create another one, possibly? So I'm not trying to apply here.
No, you're removing, you're removing the walls on High Street so that you can create the driveway, right?
Yeah. And it it's to say that it's, a- and it's tough because there's no, the the it's hard to define the stone walls because they've been there for so long that some of it's, some of it you can see and some of it you you can't see, and sometimes the walls like twelve feet wide with the way they they settle and they fall. Um, and then the leaves fall and they compost on top of it and create dirt and soil. Um, but we can, we can move it down to fourteen feet. It's just if anyone ever knew what height, if you come down that, if you're pulling off a high street, it's, it's super hard um uh pulling out of those driveways, it's um because people scream down High Street, coming up on the hill, coming coming down towards the um um, the MBTA station, location. Um, where it's been, it's been tough, but we can, we can narrow it down to fourteen feet. It it's just, would be a tough turn, uh but we can do it.
Um.
I I won't want to say a tough turn, but it.
You mean the new, the new driveway? I think the new driveway is okay, as long as the new driveway doesn't exceed twelve feet. I think you're fine.
Oh.
It's the, it's the, it's the removal from the prior one. But the way I'm reading the bylaw, and maybe others will disagree, is I think we're okay. I think this is okay as is.
Yeah, we're not, we're not.
You're not removing anything from any driveway. You are building, you're creating a new driveway.
Correct.
And the new driveway is going to be twelve feet in width, so I think you're good.
Okay.
I I I agree on that, and I think the the way it's shown is also safer for the turn.
So I think you're fine.
I don't think that's actually how it's written. I very clear about not removing stones more than one foot of, well, two feet of either, one foot of either side of that twelve feet. And I think it was meant to minimize the impact of the stone wall. And I I understand that we do have to address safety, but we should first always start with what our bylaws say and make decisions. And related to that, so, so it's also like, I looked at this and it seems to be a survey thing and a common survey would be um there, the survey is not saying that is the owner's wall. And our bylaw says, and I think it's probably in state law, that if you don't have definitive that the boundary is the owner's, the the default is that this is a public way, public property. And I think just, just to reiterate the point to the board, a recent case when someone said, hey, I'd like to take down a tree. We went through the process of scenic road, and sure enough, it was actually a town tree. But the applicant thought it was their own tree. So I I think that we have to be very sensitive of public property. Um, I think we have to, there's a, the scenic road bylaw for a reason, and um, so I think this applicant's trying to be very respectful of materials and and the view, but I think we have to. But I think we have to explore taking, if we're removing that section of the wall, can that be added to the public part of the wall and not become a private property?
So, oh, so, okay, well, whoa. I'll actually, there's like two parts to that.
Yeah.
Um, so if you look at the drawing that that we have up, um, the actual property pins, if you look, the black dots are actually in the stone, actually in the stone wall. So and it's funny, and it's kind of like what I was saying before is the stone walls could be anywhere from nonexisting to like twelve feet. And so, um, if you actually, if you drive down, you actually see the orange stakes. So so most of the Stonewall is on the the prop, the homeowner's property. But the other thing is, is and Meredith and Dan, who are on the the call themselves, and they can, um, they can talk more into this, but um, there was um, and I and I spoke with Peter about it, but down the street, there was a, there's a portion of the Stonewall that's been missing. Uh, and there was a telephone pole. Peter, do you remember this, the picture I showed you? Um, of a.
I do not recall. I'm sorry, man.
Yeah, so there was a previous development up on the hill and and the developer. Now, now, mind, I'm on the historic historical district commission, so I personally love stone walls. Um, and this is more for like Meredith and Daniel, if they would agree to it, is they never put that Stonewall back. And it's in the pictures that I sent you, Peter. Um, but I can, or I can share my screen.
You can share your screen because I don't, I don't recall this conversation. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. It was a while ago because it was part of that first meeting. Um, share my screen.
Oh, I gotta make him go, I'm sorry.
And while Matt is sharing his screen, Tricia, if it's okay with you, I'll just make a small comment, which is, I do appreciate very much that there's um, one of the items I think we were to consider is um, com- compensatory actions proposed such as wall replacement. And I do think it's 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 good that we're talking about kind of consistency on the scenic route. And I do appreciate the applicant's um, willingness to do that already. Um, so I just wanted to say that I I I like the consider, the consideration piece of the bylaw. I feel good about. It's just that funky little language that Kate is looking at that we.
Sorry, how can I, how can I share my screen? I'm sorry, guys. I'm computer.
Button at the bottom.
It's a green button and it says.
Oh, yeah. Oh, the one that's really right in my face. Okay. Um. So. Can you guys see that?
We can, we can see a corner of of the map. Yeah, and your cursor.
Okay, um.
No, we're seeing a blue blank screen.
I have multiple screens. That's sorry.
It's okay. I did the same thing earlier.
Um. Can you see that one?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so that's what we saw before. And it's got to go through. So that's the stone. So that's in front of the existing house right now.
Okay.
And again, that's going down toward down High Street. That's where we're gonna blow through. But the next picture, not this one. Sorry, right here.
Hmm.
If you see up here, that's the um, um. Is it serious?
That's serious.
Yeah, serious drive. So at one point, they blew through this spot. And the stone walls were never put back.
Oh.
So so this bugs me and that it's not right. Um, so what we would love to do is most likely, we're gonna have some excess Stonewall uh, stones on it. We would love to, and again, this is Meredith and and Daniel. But to put that, you know, the stones back in that spot, if you guys want us to, we can do that. Um, as kind of like a concession for what someone else has left on this street, um, which I find is awful.
And and I think that's when did I did drive up there to look and I was trying to say there, if there's a place to make this better for the public. Because I did look up. So I think the pin in the middle of the wall is the common survey when there isn't. So so it isn't really the owner's property, isn't really town property. We're sharing it because
Right, right.
It's gonna survey to get who really owns it. So so we cannot say it's definitely the applicant's property.
Right, yeah.
That is the survey standard, if you don't know.
Yeah.
I would feel much better about, because it gives something to that neighborhood, it gives to the town, the scenic road. It it's definitely um, awesome that you guys noticed that. And I feel like the applicant's still getting what they need. I think we should look at that width part, though, a little bit, if that can be um, tightened up, because I personally, I it's no surprise to anyone on the board that I like to follow our bylaws. And then we evaluate when they need to be changed. And I think the safety is an important issue. Um, so if that can be tightened up um, and still get the safety, um, I would like to, but I would definitely support, um, it would be awesome if that could happen on putting.
Kate, Kate, can I just ask Kate to clarify something? Because I'm I'm not sure, Kate, I agree with your interpretation of the bylaw, and I just want to understand what you're saying, because the way I read it is any new driveway must be a certain width. I think we met that. I think the applicant has met that. And then it says Stonewall sections to be removed from a driveway shall not exceed the driveway width by more than one foot on either side. I read that to mean, once you have a working drive driveway on that track of land, if you start messing with it to create some other driveway, you've got to be thoughtful. And I'm not sure that applies here. I thought we're removing from a, from a wall other, other than another driveway. So are are we, am I right, Matt, that you are removing stones from the ends of a wall, not from a different driveway, right?
Not from a different driveway, no.
Exactly. So I'm not sure, Kate, that language applies to this. I think the language reads as if it's trying to protect the integrity of each individual driveway, not the ends of walls.
Well, my other, if you look at the, Peter, actually, could you bring up that that drawing? And and it's also a look thing, a a look aesthetic part of the stone walls. If we can, in the the shape of, of the way that lot comes down, we can do, you want to get us like a swooping radius Stonewall. It would be more sharp, but we can do that if that's preferred. Um.
Yeah, I I I personally don't think that's preferred. I think I think the the radius, it's 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 a natural uh, entry point to the driveway. And 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 I think the the bylaws cannot uh, cover every single situation. And this is not a driveway to a house. This is an easement that requires entering to go all the way to the back to enter the house. So so I I think in this case, going through, and I know High Street, I I drive through it all the time. It is, it is tricky when you start going downhill towards towards the station. I think having a sharp angle on on the stone is just gonna be a problem. So some, 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 somebody's gonna hit those walls. And and then we we're back where we where we started, I think, was being proposed here. Seems to me to make um, um, more more logical sense from the traffic point of view. And the integrity, the integrity of the walls into the future.
I I would say there's enough of a gray area in that language that I would be comfortable with this as is. But I am very curious to hear about the idea of filling in the the empty stuff across the street. If if there's a way to make that happen.
It's actually.
That would be magic to my ears. I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's it's on the same side. Uh.
Same side, okay.
It would be a, it would be an easy process. Again, it's Meredith and Dan's money. Um, but it would be, oh, sorry, Peter.
Just to make note, I just wanted, before we jump to putting stones in there, I I do think we need to step back and look at the cirrus. Because I just want to make sure that we will not be cutting off any access and or uh, any access that was required at the time of permitting of cirrus that may have been in, that may have been secured for any emergency access to the site via traffic and or um, fire. And I do know that there was a three-phase power that was connected from High, the the three-phase. Cirrus needed three-phase power and three-phase power existed on High Street and it did not exist on Memorial Drive. So the the power connection for cirrus is looped off of the, off a High Street. And so my question is, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, is what is that? Is it an easement, making sure that there's not access for emergency vehicles? And why was that left open? Uh, just to say, was there a reason it was left open? Because I do know there's infrastructure off a High Street that feeds the service development.
Peter, I I I agree with that, especially if there's a fire lane that the fire department requested, of course, we need to know that. But conversely, I would be interested in knowing if there was any agreement from that construction that they had to re refinish the wall after the construction was done and and if it was ignored. Um, I think we need to check both both sides of the issue.
Well, this is the other thing I was gonna say, that becomes an enforcement issue for cirrus, not for this landowner. So was there a scenic route application to move that wall? And if there wasn't, and it was done without an application, I I I'm not a hundred percent comfortable demanding from this applicant some kind of cost to them to move, to move things necessarily. So I feel like we should explore that a little bit more before we discuss it further for sure and understand there must have been a scenic route application by cirrus to move those rocks. Or by the town.
They might, they might.
That's to me, that that application predates me, so I would have to do some research.
Yeah, they might not even have have gone through it. It could have been, because that's a new poll. I you never know if even ever source just went in there and did it. And just, you you never, yeah, you don't. And and that would be the other thing is putting a Stonewall on somebody else's property, which is a another aspect, but I would like to keep it separate for this application.
Yeah, I I agree. I don't think we can cloud things here on another, on another piece of property that though it is well noted that it needs to be researched and and taken care of. And if there's extra stone available, maybe we have the, at least can, the town can take them off your hands and put them where they should be. And the cost should land, if there was something that was done um, against this policy, then the cost should land on someone else. Um, I agree with, I agree with Kate in her reading on these bylaws of the the twelve feet plus one on each side is fourteen feet. I think though that 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 really only dictates the circumstance of a driveway going in at the typical ninety degrees from from a street and doesn't take into conca- into consideration the other considerations listed above, which are public safety, local residential traffic patterns, overall traffic volume, congestion, all the things that they were talking about that could be safety issues with this particular driveway. Um, so, so given that, I'm um, you know, I'm I'm fine with the, with the plan as as proposed and feel, given the applicant, that it's going to be done with 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 great care. Um, and if they find in in the process that they can, you know, if if there's opportunity with the views that they can, they can make it narrower so that that wall looks even better than I um, I think that that that's the route that they will take, though it it would can be per plan as as well.
As long as it's at least twelve feet. Right? We still want to follow that piece of it.
I think that, I think.
Not fourteen.
Right, that the the new driveway on a scenic road shall not exceed fourteen feet in width.
The asphalt.
What's that?
Asphalt. The asphalt will not be doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are two different things.
Maybe I'm reading the wrong section. I'm reading two four nine dash two two driveway design standards. A new driveway in a scenic road shall not exceed twelve feet in width.
Right.
It has to be twelve feet or less.
Yeah, and then the one foot on each side would be the, would would be the opening for the minimum, uh, for the maximum for the Stonewall.
Right, but like I said, I think that's um, it it's as per your driveway further up where it's a, it's a ninety degree angle. You know, into into that drive with this one is um, obviously not that. It's an acute angle.
Yeah, and that's what I was saying, that acute angle is gonna create a sharp corner to negotiate there. It just doesn't make any sense to me that 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 would work. Somebody.
I mean, it's possible that that driveway on the end could turn and come and meet the could meet the street at a ninety degree angle. Um.
But then the easement that has to be changed.
Correct, which we just, which we just went through.
Yeah, well, and also, and also I think it's kind of a mix for a kind of um, I don't know, less clear marking of using the stone walls as property markers and things, which I think was was part of the original intent, how they were used.
Correct.
I think so, um, in my limited understanding of it. Um, so, um. So are there any other comments in this? Does anyone have a? Kate, you have a strong. Yeah, I do. I do. When when it's public property, so the stone walls, I think we agree, it's it's maybe public, private. But that's, there's, there's a whole bunch of survey rules about that. And so if we don't add to the Stonewall, then we are giving it to this applicant, essentially. And I think we should be very clear about that, but my.
How, how, that's true.
So you can um, extend the wall somewhere. And if it's not practical, then if it's not practical anywhere, I would not ask the applicant to drive across Ashland and rebuild a Stonewall somewhere. That is not my ask. But I think if there's any place along High Street, that that can be reasonably moved. Essentially, we're saying, yes, you get to make your driveway, but please continue with the public property of a Stonewall. Right now, we're.
Can I just, can I ask a clarifying question? Through this process, will the applicant end up with extra stones that are not used anywhere? Okay, can we agree that those belong to the public and they will be set aside so that in the future, if we do clear things up with cirrus or have a place to place them, the public can place them where we need to place them? It's more of a retention question rather than a movement question. I don't think we can require this applicant to move this for us. But I think we do have a right, because it, the the wall belongs to the town of Ashland, to basically say, retain these pieces for later use.
Is that what we're saying? Is that what you're saying?
I think that's what I'm saying.
Well, I think there's room in the bylaw to ask for the mitigation of replacing it, of of putting it somewhere. And again, I don't think you're not asking truck it to Alaska and do something to finish it. I I think I think that has to be considered. If there's no place to do it on High Street or reasonable location, I don't think we should ask that as well. But I'm not sure we run to ground options about asking for that eighteen feet that's hoped to be replaced somewhere along High Street.
So the stuff that's gonna be set aside. Maybe I misunderstood this project. The way I heard it is things are being moved out of the way from one place to the next to build this, to build a driveway. What I'm hearing now is maybe it's being used to extend some other element of property that's more private, according to Kate. So can I just get a clarification?
Plan is, yes.
The new, the new, the stones that are gonna get moved off the scenic route, are those moving to a scenic route?
Those are being.
They're they're being turned into the property to ex, to, so you'll turn in their driveway and the stones that used to block it off will run parallel to the new driveway.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for explaining it to me, because I feel like I'm the layperson here and.
So I I mean, essentially what we're doing is is we're, if if you were to take the, the, Peter, if you right now, there's no existing Stonewall coming, coming off of High Street. But but essentially what we're doing is we're connecting a brand new and creating a brand new, probably eighty foot um, Stonewall, yeah, right there. So we're creating a brand new eighty foot wall to actually connect into the High Street wall. Um, and we're gonna be doing it on both sides of High Street. So and Catherine, um, correct me if I'm wrong. So if we're, if we're looking at, um.
I get it. We're using it to create the entrance way to private property.
Well, yeah, but there's also, again, there's also some interior stone walls that we're, that we'll be moving to create this as well. Um, but I think what Catherine, correct me if I'm wrong, is if we are allowed to move fourteen feet of wall, but we go over to like twenty. but we go over to like twenty feet of wall, the extra six feet you want built somewhere else on High Street.
I my, I believe it's more than fourteen. I think it's actually about eighteen feet and ideally eighteen feet. Oh, I need a cut. That's great. And we recreate eighteen feet on High Street.
Okay, okay.
Standing with public, a public piece of property, a shared piece of on the board.
I I.
I'm asking you to put it on private property for someone else. And I'd prefer it not put on private property for the applicant, though I absolutely a hundred percent respect what you're doing and you've been transparent and I love it that you're using stone walls. So it's not a reflection on the particular application or quality or what you're doing. It's a reflection on standing up for maintaining public property.
So.
And I'll say that I've been.
I I think I think what what I understand Katie is referring to that section that that is actually on High Street, which is about eighteen feet or so of of stone. If that section that's going to be taken out to create these 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 access um uh can be replaced in High Street somewhere else, like the applicant is suggesting on that other area that's missing, then that will be the the preference. I mean, it's that's how how I I'm I'm understanding what uh.
Okay.
What case.
So so our um, for lack of a better word, our decision would be would be an approval for the removal of the stone wall along High Street as shown, but the town retains ownership of the stones removed and the owner agrees to when a suitable location is found um along a scenic road to place the stones in that location versus on their own property.
But I think there's got to be a caveat to that. I mean, the the I I I think I think we on on this decision, if we're going to ask them to do that, which I agree with, I think we should just tell them where to put it so that it that and just moving equipment to move these stones is I mean, is is something that is not.
So.
There's a big difference between moving it that serious spot that's abutting their property and bringing it in a truck and bringing it somewhere.
Can we?
Exactly.
Can I make a suggestion?
When we talked to Public Works about trees a couple of weeks ago, they didn't have two hundred and fifty bucks to grant a stump. So I don't think they have the money to rebuild the stone wall somewhere.
Yeah, oh, we take oh, we take two years to tell them where to put it. That's not fair either.
Can I make a suggestion? It seems to me like we could do a little bit of investigation on our end to figure out if if that public Cyrus location is in fact still public. Um, and then come back and and have a more thorough discussion because I've been a little dense like a stone wall and I finally understood what Kate has been saying. Uh, thank you, Kate and Marcelo for getting me there. It took a couple of people to get me there, but I get it now. Essentially, we are, we we do seem to have this kind of using public property to accentuate and make a private property more genuine to its environment, which I appreciate, but we do have to be sensitive to to the fact that this is a scenic route. So I would propose a continuance so that we can investigate the serious that that spot and properly engage with applicants so that we're not putting the applicant in a situation where they're holding on to stones, storing stones or then we can have a more substantive discussion about how realistic it is to move it however many feet.
I I think that's reasonable, but we can. When is this project proceeding?
Well, uh, Meredith wanted Meredith and Daniel wanted us to start six months ago.
Right, but given that it's now January.
Yeah, um, but honestly, story. So if you look at where the driveway turns, storing the stones is not a big deal. Um, and and we're going to be, we're going to be in this project for a a good ten months and we're not going to be breaking ground until um, probably probably like June. The timeframe, June, July. So we'll have the stones and we'll be in there for probably a good year from now. So I think at that point, we could probably if 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 we can rebuild it on serious, we I'm sure within a year we can find out if we can.
Um, you are not concerned, the applicant is not concerned by the the burden of storing the stones until the town figures out where they can be used.
Yeah, Meredith, Daniel.
I'm I'm fine with that.
Yeah, as long as it's not indefinite, I don't think we'll be too concerned with the timing.
Are you guys concerned about the cost of moving them to that serious location if if it's available? Are you willing to absorb that cost?
Well, I I think that would be a discussion that's had, depending on where the town wants the wants to move it. I understand both sides of the serious concern, if that's a legitimate secured access point that has to remain in place. That might make things a little bit more uh complicated in terms of where the stones get replaced too, but we're we're happy to work with the town to to find a a best solution here.
Can the can the can the condition simply be that that they're going to store the 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 stones as as proposed? And that within within the next whatever timeframe, the town will tell them if they can put it in serious. Otherwise, the is is the town choosing to take them away? Or or just tell them, forget about it. I mean, then the town can decide what within that timeframe.
So I think one, I think either we can get there or be just smart and it's hard to be super smart at whatever time tonight, but get the applicant what they need, because I think there's in our bylaw that there can be requirements that they like we're allowing to do something, they had to come to us. It's not a given to mitigate which which all want to be the simple, easy, put it on High Street, that would be awesome. But secondarily, if we if it's even practical to move, and I'm kind of with Kevin, like we're paying to move rocks, maybe that's not the best idea. Um, but I think we don't want to release that our rights on that until we fully understand it, like Anna said.
Yeah, I'm I'm not comfortable just kind of coming up with this without understanding what where we would move them. I I think that we can do a continuance and actually investigate that serious locate location. It's hard for me to imagine that we can't figure that out relatively quickly. And it's a little tricky because we're talking about town property and I think we have some obligation to figure this out and do it right and not put the burden on the applicant to hold on to things and to wait on us to figure this out. I think we we should figure this out.
Okay, um.
I'm happy to do the research. I think it's fair. I think you can pull up the plans and we can go from there, so.
Is is this applicant have a have a concern about continuance until? Is the applicant okay with that? It seems like that would be helpful to all so that we can have some finality and closure.
I I think we're okay with a continuance.
All right, let me have a let me have just a general um. You know, so so the applicant has an idea of where this is going. Does I would I want to know where people stand as far as the plan is given and the removal of the stones for the driveway as they intend. Um, and it's an informal vote because it's just about that, but can I have people in order? Deepa, you okay with that planist?
I am.
Okay, Marcelo? Anna is good.
I think so, as long as we're thinking about move whatever we're we have left goes to where we figure out.
I'm just talking about we're okay with step one.
Yes.
Kate, you're good with step one?
Um, I apologize, but I it's ten thirty six and I don't know what that means, like.
Okay. Kevin, are you okay with step one? Okay, so and I am as well. It it means that the plan, the plan is is in the site plan, but but step two, we don't know what to do with the rocks. It's it's informal.
Okay, because step step one, the plan shows the rocks going to the owner, not the public, so that's.
It's just step one, like I pick up the rock and I move it. Okay, that's step one. Okay.
Yes, we don't have to. So we don't have to rehearse this again in the next meeting, which is focus on step two.
Maybe we'll put the rock at Starbucks, just saying.
Right, okay, so we're so we've we've gotten that. So we're going to continue this and so until when we want enough time to make sure we review it, that we we may have to review the series. We may have to review High Street, say, yep, there's an empty spot here. Peter, I mean, I.
You know, I've been very quiet this whole time, kind of just listening. I think you know, I think we can look at the 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 series, you know, I I I don't want to jump to any conclusions on that site. You know, and 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 then we kind of talk about it from that point on.
So Peter, you'll peek us at whether there was an application under the scenic route or what what may have occurred at all, right?
Yeah, I can do. I I can look in the file and see what what's there. There there could have been. You know, I'm sure you know uh there could have been. And I'll say anything was done wrong, but I know that there's three phase power coming up off of High Street to feed service drive. And 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 I don't know if the water main looped, but I think it could be looped and that could be the access point. And so if that's the point, that's an easement that would be granted by the town. And I'm highly doubt the DPW would want a they they still involved built over an easement um that may need to be uh maintained and or exposed in in any event. So those.
We have a can we have a plan B?
Right, so are we putting, yeah, are we putting this on the twenty sixth or the February ninth? Which gives you the the reasonable amount of time, Peter, with your crowded schedule to make sure you can get the research and we can do it in one shot. Right? I don't think this it's January. I don't think these stones are getting moved right now, so.
I would say February ninth.
Let's do it February ninth. All right, so I'm going to entertain a motion to continue this until February ninth until we can get the information we need so we can know where to dump the pile of rocks.
Still moved.
All right, a second.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote.
Deepa, like a die.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So let's figure this out. We know where the stones are going. We'll fill them in somewhere and everybody's happy.
Perfect.
Good? Good with the applicants?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
We're more cheerful early in the morning, you know.
Put us on first.
I do. I have to say, it's a good way to like wrap up the substance of our discussion with stones. I feel less dense. I finally figured it out.
Stones are dense. Thank you, everyone.
Adding more humor.
Earlier as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um. Uh, just because I want to get this out of the way, I'm I'm bringing up item five and then we can. Uh, I wanted the design review committee appointments. Everyone got my email. I assume if you didn't, the summary is that Brendan Carey, yes, I'm putting things out of order because I want to get this off the agenda first. Brendan Carey um asked, requested um an alternate seat used. Um, yeah, feels it would be best for now, given the circumstances. Um, um, Kevin requested the permanent seat that expires this June. So in five months, it expires um so that he can make sure he is personal obligations leave room for a longer term permanent seat. And Hannah requested um a a permanent seat. Um, I am, I will say in in Brendan's case, I'm a little frustrated by the the situation he was in. Um, but I respect him for um for making this the decision that he did. So um those are the seats that are requested. I don't have any problem with them at this time. I think we need to kind of resolve the issues so the design review committee can move forward with their work. Um, any comments from the board?
I agree with you, Tricia. Uh, I think if 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 they've come to an agreement, seems like anecably to to feel the 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 right positions. There's not much more to to debate. I I I will vote for it just since they agree to it. What are we doing? Changing anything, right?
That's right. Um, sorry, I shouldn't have said that. Maybe Anna, unless you're agreeing.
I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, I am gonna, okay.
Make, I was just gonna make a motion, keep us going. I make a motion that we accept the um as presented, the seats um as presented by the chair for the design.
I'll second.
I think we can do them all in one group, right, Peter?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. All right, uh, roll call vote.
Deepa, like a die.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So and Kevin, you're good too? All right, that's everybody. Done. Um, now we can go back to item four.
These are the decisions that were put together and circulated. Uh, there was comments from eight uh Tricia, you reviewed them. Uh, Kate, you've sent me some great uh edits. I made those edits into the decision. Um, thank you so much for touching the one at uh the McDonald's with the backwards. Um.
You misspelled McDonald's?
No, no, no.
No, it was the the dump, but I don't know, you'll see it.
Dumpster had to be higher than the fence.
Yes.
Like that. Yeah, it was a good one. It was classic. Uh, but that was fixed and I and I thank you for that. Um, and then we had the three cell phone towers and I I and Kate, I did take your last comment and only put in the 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 boards and the that would be permitting and that most likely is the building department. And so I took out all the other committees uh and or departments, so.
So we need to review these. Why don't we bring up?
Do you want to bring them up?
We need to bring them up, right?
But there's been no change to the to the wireless decisions, right?
Uh, just very minor, very minor uh that Kate uh suggested uh removing some language about uh permits with other departments.
If you want to bring up the wireless ones first, like we could skim through those really quickly. There's not much thing.
Uh, this is AT&amp;T.
So AT&amp;T and Verizon would be identical except for changing the name.
And uh one element that was suggested, I'm gonna, oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to share my screen. I just jumped right in. Uh. We're all. Everyone see?
Yes.
Uh, the one can, uh, I'll start if we talk, excuse me. Uh, AT&amp;T.
So there are no criteria here because this isn't.
The modification.
Which because it's just a modification of something that's existing.
Correct. Uh, the one element that we changed was right here. Previously, it said uh it listed conservation commission select for for the health X, Y, and Z. Uh, and so I trimmed it down because they do have to get a building permit uh from the building office, but there is no permitting through the comm comm and or select board for this case.
Right.
We're going once, twice. Let it run all set.
Yep.
Yeah. That was AT&amp;T. I was gonna clean up my screen. I'm sorry. Yes, that thing's gonna take two seconds.
So while we're doing that, I will make a motion that we accept the AT&amp;T mobility uh decision as, do we have to do that? Do I have to accept?
Yes.
Okay, as um as modified by Peter. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And then a roll call vote.
Deepa, like a die.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that one's done.
This is the Verizon.
Verizon is. Exactly the same.
And.
Um, Peter, the header probably needs change.
Oh.
Oh.
Look, good. How did you even read that going by?
I'll do that now because I'll forget to do. Um, thank you, Deepa.
Um, quick question. So is this something that came in December where I missed the meeting? Because my name is not in the voting list.
Yeah, I think I voted on this one, the meeting that you missed, Deepa.
Okay, that sounds right.
Voted on, we voted to approve and at the on the fifteen.
Remind me now to sign this when I come there.
Okay.
All right, so this sounds identical otherwise uh to. Alright, so this sounds identical otherwise uh to.
Uh yes, in case this is the one change that was made right here.
So I will make a motion to accept the Verizon wireless uh decision as modified.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote, uh starting with Anna, I think.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Now we're on to Dish, which did have criteria. Otherwise is the same.
All this, the the front end is all the same. Uh facts and finding uh was fairly the same. Uh but the criteria was just listed out and um. As this is a special permit. Because Dish is new uh and new to the is a new addition as a co-location on the tower.
Does everyone have time to read that through? Or does anyone need time?
I'm good with it.
Alright, and then the condition is the same.
Alright, so I will make a. I will make a motion to approve the Dish Network um decision. Uh as written, I guess, in this case. Do you have the uh, do you have the header right?
I do. I double checked before I opened it up. I was gonna change it quickly.
I'll second it.
Alright, and um so I guess it's the same roll call vote, right? Starting with Anna, I guess.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
McLean, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So did um people vote on that first one?
I'm just curious, wasn't this one which came December first, the Dish one?
No, we got it at the same time, I think.
All the same night, yeah.
We we had heard it once before and we had them go notify.
Yeah, I guess I heard it on December first when I was there probably. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so so the voting on the last one should be Kevin and not Deepa.
Yes. About I on the last one.
Sorry, thanks, Kevin. Make it official on you. Alright, so now we are at two twenty-five Pond Street. That is McDonald's.
Hmm this is the site plan approval. This is all the the backend stuff.
I assume all the back, the backend, the back of, the backend stuff, I always just assume you have gone through that and.
Yeah.
All the dates and documents and the latest dates of the latest document is in there.
Yeah. The facts and fi- and then years on the the facts and findings. Uh sustainability. Site plan criteria. Moving to page five. Uh A. B. C.
Peter, I'm just saying, no, I apologize because I do try to read. It says it doesn't contain wetlands, but didn't? Didn't it have some wetlands that they had to go to the CONCOM?
Uh the parcel does not contain wetlands.
Oh, okay. It was adjacent, okay.
It was adjacent, it was across the street. So it was in jurisdiction. Work within the parking lot was in jurisdiction.
Sorry, guys, my dog decided to visit.
More the merrier. This is the element uh that was changed with Kate's uh suggestion. In yellow.
Looks good to me.
Move it further down.
So these are the conditions. I don't think that there were very many outside of the. Um the site plan, which shows the change stop signs, it shows the changed um access accessible places. It shows the the fence, all of that is on the site plan, so uh which which they need to follow. So the conditions talk about and. Open to if I if we've missed something here, conditions talk about protecting the vegetation that's already there. Obviously, there's new vegetation being planted, but this is about protecting what's there. An inspection fund, which Peter has said may be good to be a part of basically all of our projects. Obviously, it's a much smaller amount than the big ones. Um the stormwater management plan, which was referred to the operations and maintenance plan. Someone had sent an email asking about the bike rack, but that.
Don't worry about it. I think that was a done issue because there was no consensus.
I think there was no good place to put it and, yeah.
I think we're fine.
Place, yeah. General conditions was uh fair with 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 your is a full appointment uh.
See, I think the rest of it was just taking out the conditions that had nothing to do with this project.
I've read the rest of it. If there's no which changes, then I'm good.
Okay. I don't re- I don't remember who else had uh comments or questions on on this. Please bring them up if you did. Alright. So this was the.
The site plan.
Was that the site plan review? Okay, so.
My question is, I know this came up again December fifteenth, but there were minor changes. Should I be voting for this or does Kevin jump into this? Because I know my name is on this paper.
Oh, so who voted on the?
I.
Deepa, this is. Can't remember.
About to miss my one meeting.
Okay.
Can't remember when we had that vote, if that was.
But that was, yeah, right.
So, yeah, the December fifteenth, you probably voted.
I know we voted on a lot of stuff. I remember thinking I was gonna save your wrists that night.
Uh yeah, so Kevin can vote. Obviously, Kevin can sign.
Okay, but you want to make sure you you change his name. My name is there on that paper right now.
Yeah, I'll take care of it. That uh I'll take care of it on the. Uh I'll take care of that tomorrow. Uh just moving forward, this is the special permit. Uh this is all the same. Oh, I'm sorry, again, I forgot to stop. I share my screen. It's early for us, too. Uh this is all the same as the last decision. The conditions are the same. This is the same. Uh I would change this piece of it up here to Kevin. And uh the facts and finding, the location is the same in the site plan approval. Sustainability, but the special permit criteria is different. I'll just slowly go down. Hey, I know you talked about this one in the email. I tried to out with the rearrange it.
Okay, I guess I should read that. It was something I didn't actually understand the way it was written before.
I think what I was trying to state is that the that the left turn only, excuse me, that the right. It's a right turn only. Right? Because if we're coming out Pond Street, you're gonna turn right.
Yeah, Peter, I wonder if this is the um, is this the most updated version of this?
It it wa- it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
It says left turn only again in the sentence just before where you just changed.
At least that's what I had in my files, the January ninth is the latest uh latest and greatest.
Yeah, like three days ago. Does that make sense? Yeah.
And I didn't receive it after that. But what I was trying to say is that when you're coming out of Pond Street. The right exit only, the right turn only will remain. And so if you want to take a left. The best exit is on to Nickerson Road and using that in Nickerson Road, Pond Street intersection. To go north up one twenty six.
So then in the in the last.
Yeah, I think that's why when I read it, I was like, I don't know what we're saying. So, yeah.
Okay.
That's.
I just, my dyslexia. Jumped up again.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I I just don't think, I'm sorry, I just don't think this is the um the current document. I don't think it has my edits in there. So.
This is the one, I apologize, I I had this one dated January nine. I'm opening up January nine.
Site plan.
This is the special permit. The six would have been sent out, which I sent out.
Do we need to maybe agree that it's to be amended to match the language and? Can we vote on it that way?
Uh we can do that, yes.
You want to do that, Tricia?
Um. I'm sorry, say that again.
Like, we would, we would approve the mo- we would approve it. With Peter editing it to match your prior edits or the the prior edits that were missing.
And then he can send that out again before you guys come in to sign?
I I mean, I think you have to, like, just because.
To be on the safe side.
No, I I I think you should and and there was nothing, there was nothing um obviously. There's just the wording, you know, that kind of smooth things out, you know, so um. But I think we're all in the, that those are just the criteria and not the conditions, um which I think were the. There just weren't that many conditions, so.
I apologize, I I I must have saved something wrong or put it in different site, but. Uh Tricia, I'll go on back and gra- get yours and.
Okay, I I can resend it too.
Send it back out. Uh do you want me to continue to share that screen or?
Um I was. Should I make a, take a stab, make a motion that we approve the two twenty-five Pond Street special? Permit and site plan approval decisions. Pending the um discussed edits and it requiring a final. Review, sent out a final and review. But that's fine. So we'll we'll send it out with an email directing you to those. And it just, it really just makes the text, I think streamlined and smoother. So um. So that's fine.
I can suck, I'll suck. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, and then everyone could read through it on their own uh earlier timeframe.
So that sounds reasonable. Kate made the motion, sounded like we started and then.
I think she did. She finished.
I'll second it.
And a roll call vote, starting with you, Anna.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
McLean, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So we take care of that. We'll send it. Send it out, Peter, if we can just verify that that the copies are the right, verify with me and then.
I'll verify with you tomorrow. I'll be, I'll be in and I'll pull. That's the first thing I'm gonna, I'll do.
Okay, before they go out.
Yep.
And then, okay, the last thing is meeting minutes. I mean, unless anyone wants to talk about anything else, we have lots of stuff I'm sure we could talk about, but it's eleven oh four.
I think there was two sets of meeting, meeting minutes. Do we need to prove them one at a time or can we prove both?
Ooh, I thought there was only one.
I only saw one.
Am I crazy? I thought there was one attached to today's email.
No.
Nope, no, I'm wrong. November tenth, I apologize. You're right, November tenth is it. Why I thought I had more, I don't know. November tenth it is.
I think I had very. Few edits, I think I had already sent mine to Peter.
The ed- the 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 copy that went out was what Tricia I was.
Oh, I know why, guys. Was there was this another, wasn't there another set of minutes? January sixth email? Am I wrong? No, I'm wrong. I apologize. Forget it. Just November.
Late. It's late, Anna.
Like I thought, yeah, sorry.
I'm glad someone else goes nuts, not just me.
Yeah, eleven o'clock, I'm not really awake anymore. I'm somewhere else. Um just that one set, sorry, November.
Yeah, so these are the minutes where these were the minutes from the building moratorium. We had that discussion. Can't remember what my edits were, but it seems to me it was like spelling of somebody's name and stuff like that.
They were very minor. Um.
Yeah.
They were very minor. I can pull them up if people want to.
I'm sure name changes are okay with me. As long as you're not changing my name to like a bad word or something. Someone did that once to a paper I wrote in college. They took like the my professor's name and implanted it throughout the essay, so made it mean.
Oh. That's vicious.
Yeah.
Peter, was Emma with us at that time?
She was. Yeah, Emma left.
Was in November.
Was her last day in December?
She left December first.
Yeah, okay.
The day I still think about.
Oh.
She's doing great, by the way, I thought.
I was gonna say how she, she's doing well.
Great. I was texting with her the other day, yeah.
Where is she?
Uh in the state. So she, her new job, she works with the Department of Housing Community Development. And she now is on the team that oversees MBTA zoning.
Awesome. She must have really liked all those presentations.
I know. She really reviews uh all the compliance. With.
Awesome.
Yeah, so she works from home. She has to go to Boston two days a week. She has no night meal. So.
Is that a threat, Peter?
No, no, no.
Yeah, that means that we need to finish this one.
Exactly.
Alright, any, any changes on the meeting minutes, folks?
No changes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the November tenth, twenty twenty-two minutes, as is with the minor name edits that Tricia had made.
I I think actually they, yeah, I'm not even sure that's what it was, but they, those edits came before you even saw it, so.
Gotcha. So as is.
As is, yeah.
I'll second.
And roll call vote?
Deepa, aye.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is good. I don't remember. I don't remember who it says. If we're all in attendance, Kevin was probably there too.
I think I was there.
You you were out?
No, I was there.
You were there? Do you vote aye as well?
I do.
Okay, good. Alright, anything else critical this evening, people?
I don't think so.
Alright. I don't want to extend it, but on that, that hundred, that Village of the American thing, is that, is that critical or is that could be?
Oh, that is critical.
I was thinking it might be, sorry.
Oh, did we skip, I skipped something? Did we skip, did I skip something?
Yes.
I think you skipped something important, possibly.
Wow, I skipped it, I'm sorry.
Pete, I really, you're just frustrating me. Sorry. Where is it? No, I'm just kidding, where is it? What did I skip?
Oh, boy, wait, is that on the new agenda or the old agenda?
Number, number five, huh?
Yep.
On the old.
That was on the old agenda.
There was number five on the old agenda.
Is it on the amended agenda?
I don't think it is. Okay.
It's not on the amended, I think we're fine, I'm just looking at today's email from Peter.
No, I, I definitely remember it being there, but Ki, Peter, I don't think it's on this one.
I don't think, I must have, I must have amended, I must have amended the old agenda and left it off, but that.
So what does that, what does that mean?
That was important. Um, that means I made a mistake, that's what I mean.
Okay.
Um, and, um, I don't know, it's either true, so just as a, what it was is that, um, based on development, they're not here tonight. Obviously, but, um, there, it was the trans, the, the transfer the, the responsibilities of the covenant to the, uh, to based on development from FAFD, F R E building to FAFD. Um. I've never made a mistake like this before, so I don't want to tell you the wrong answer of what to do, so, um. Uh, I can, um, I think we may, I hate to say this, because I think it may mess up their closing, uh, push it to the next meeting, or we can vote on it and sign it. Um, and then I can talk to council before we sign it. Um, but the, the out, it was just a consent to transfer the responsibilities of the covenant to uh, based on development.
I mean, I don't have a problem.
I don't know how you got.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with taking a stab at voting for it pending council's advice.
I did print out the revised agenda today that I posted, and it's not on my agenda, so.
It's not on the new agenda?
I just double-checked the one that's posted on, on the planning board's website and it's not on there.
I don't think we can do it.
Either we can vote, the select board approved it, so at this point, everyone knows based on development is going to build a hundred Jefferson Street. Uh, the, the covenant that went back to two thousand and two was signed by the planning board and the select board. And there's a consent item that says if responsibility is transferred, then both the planning board and the select board have to vote. At the last select board meeting on the fourth of January, they voted to transfer that responsibility to based on development. It was posted on a previous agenda, but then the agenda I posted, which had the update regarding the continuance of three oh one Pond Street, uh, which I want to post soon as possible, because I think a lot of the, the, uh, the condominium residents were interested in that application, I must have grabbed the wrong agenda and updated it and then just posted that as revised.
So how does this impact the applicant, you're concerned it's gonna get in the way of their closing?
If you guys want to vote on it, um, and then I can talk to council tomorrow, and if that was not appropriate, we may have to redo the vote on the twenty-sixth.
My suggestion would be that we take an informal vote, make sure we have a majority, and then we do a formal vote next time, and that should at least cover.
Thoughts?
So is this a, is this a, um, this is just a formality, right? That's just a formality, Peter, right, that we need to transfer this covenant?
It's a.
I mean, there's nothing to discuss with it, it's just, okay.
Well.
So, so it's just the open meeting law, so how, there's gotta be some way that we can vote and cover, um.
Well, it was on a previous agenda, uh, so it was posted out sometime, but Kate, I'm not trying to put myself in any bad hot water, I'm not trying to put the. I think worst case scenario is the planning board, if you want to vote, I can talk to town council and tell her the situation, and she may say, revoted at the next meeting, or she may say, yeah, sure, you guys are all set, you guys are covered with an open meeting law.
I will.
I think we should, we should be careful, because it is a public, public violation. If we vote for this, it's a.
Without being on the agenda, yeah.
Then, um, I, well, I'm not asking, I'm not asking anybody to feel, to do anything that you're uncomfortable with. I made a mistake, I take full responsibility.
Do you know when the, uh, do you know when their deadline is?
They're closing?
Yeah.
Uh, they're closing soon.
Can we have an, listen, what if we do an emergency meeting of the planning board virtually to vote right before they're closing? As long as you post for it correctly, let's do this right. If it's, if it's, if it's a one item agenda, let's, we can, if you can post it in the morning and we can do a twenty, it's gonna be five minute.
We only need three of us, right?
Exactly, and then we can formally vote consistent with public meeting law.
Thank, thank, that's a great suggestion, Anna, I agree.
Alright, so, so you need to.
The agenda tomorrow.
Yeah.
That would give us maybe Tuesday morning.
Exactly.
Uh, at nine o'clock, you know, eight o'clock, whatever.
Whenever, yeah, I'm sure three of us can make it, I'll be there, just tell me when.
And wha- whatever that was. Um, thank you, Anna, I really appreciate that.
I think that'll be cleaner.
I think so too.
So you're gonna need, you're gonna need to set a meeting time, right? So if you post it tomorrow, like you said, you can do Tuesday. At what time?
I could do eight P M by, excuse me, eight A M on Zoom. Um, and I could go on, open up the Zoom link, we could.
Perfect.
I could do eight A M, me, Anna, who else can be there at eight A M on Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, I can do eight A M, I'll put it on my calendar now.
Even, I'm not sure, I'm not sure there's a third.
I can too, um.
You just can't miss it.
It's, I, has to be virtual, right? Can be virtual, right?
Yeah.
Virtual.
Can we get a fourth person just in case, because it would suck if three of us are not there.
I just simply can't.
I can't. If you make it Wednesday, I could have a much higher probability of promising. But not a hundred.
I mean, we just can't miss it, if, if Deepa, me or Tricia miss it, then there's no.
Yeah, I could only do it outside of work hours, I'm not allowed to have a laptop with a camera at my current job site.
What about, what about in the evening, what about Tuesday evening?
I can do that.
That we pop on for literally five minutes.
Five minutes, Peter.
Oh, yeah.
The safe side, I think we want more than three there, because if somebody doesn't show, you're not gonna have what you need.
So Tuesday at Marcelo, what, uh, what time could you pop on? Be a phone, whatever.
Uh, I, I would say six o'clock would be safe for me.
Tuesday at six, how many people could do Tuesday at six?
I'll do it, it's five minutes, guys.
Alright.
Okay.
You, you need work earlier to get home at six, because I don't get home at six.
I'll have to do it from the train, if it's five minutes.
Yeah, I could do it from the car at six.
Oh, that's true, I can do it from the car.
If it's five minutes, I mean, it's, it's.
Alright, so this is that.
Alright, thank you so much, I greatly appreciate that, that's, that's big. Um, okay, I will send out a media, I'll post the agenda tomorrow at six on Tuesday, and I will have that one nighter agenda. Agenda.
Yeah, if we can just keep it short in case those are, you know, driving buses, all that stuff.
That's all we're gonna do, we're gonna go, we're gonna open it, there's not, no public hearing to read, we're gonna vote and, and we're gonna go.
Yeah, and I think it's cleaner if we all try to make an effort to be there and so that if somebody's sick or whatever, or forgets about it, we, we get this done.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Alright. Good catch, Kate.
You just.
Alright, so, um, I am gonna make a motion that we uh, adjourn the meeting at eleven seventeen.
Thank you, and Peter, you'll send us a reminder, just so we don't. I have it on my calendar, but you'll send an agenda out.
I'll send the agenda tomorrow, I'll send the meeting invite.
Perfect.
So we can hit your calendars and then I can send.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll second that, Tricia.
Alright.
Oh, sorry.
Deepa, good day.
Anna Tesmeniski, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Captain Jersey, aye.
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye, so five minute meeting on Tuesday. Nice.